Great, thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Baines, Brettafeld.
Here.
Capriolio.
Here.
Chavez, Olivier, Brandal, and Council President Soria.
Here.
Next, we have the invocation by Reverend Adrian Lee. If you can, from Family Community Church, if you want to come on up. And then if we can all stand up and remain standing for the flag salute.
Good morning. This is about our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before your throne of mercy, your throne of grace, recognizing you as our sovereign God, our Lord, and our King. Our Lord, we bless your name, and we want to honor you on this day. We want to do those things that are pleasing to you. So Father, we lift up this great council to you in the name of Jesus. Lord, I pray for your spirit to prevail, your spirit of love, your spirit of peace, your spirit of unity be with them on today. Lord, we pray that you crown them with knowledge and wisdom, and not only knowledge and wisdom, but discernment and discretion. The decisions that they make, Father, I pray that you stir up their creativity, Lord, that they will be able to work together to find fruitful, productive solutions and decisions for our city and our community. Lord, we ask that you bless them with an extra portion of your spiritual leadership today. Help them to see things the way that you see them. Help them to see people the way you see them, and situations the way you see them. Lord, we entrust them into your care. We lift them up, Father. We thank you for them. We thank you for their presence, and I ask a special blessing for them, for their families as well. Be with them, and thank you for all the people that are here today that are gathered in the sound of my voice with each individual and collective concerns. We pray for a spirit of peaceful discussion and solution today, that your name be glorified in the way that we handle the business at hand. Lord, we bless you, we honor you, and we thank you. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Let every heart say amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there are. There was a change to the invocator, which is Reverend Adrian Lee from Family Community Church. We have an add-on proclamation, Tyler Ward Day. Also, 3B, item 3B, has been removed from the agenda by staff. Item 3E has been pulled by staff and will be heard at 1:55 PM at our special meeting. And finally, the 2 PM item regarding proposed parks and public safety transaction use tax has been removed by staff. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
3B has been removed, yes.
Have we given a reason to that?
No, I don't have a reason. Just was removed by staff. So if anybody is here who could address that, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Great. Is there, do any council members have any changes to the agenda?
The consent calendar, yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
So there's a motion. I'll second. Any opposition? CNN motion carries seven zero. Now we'll go on to consent calendar. Would any council member like to pull an item for discussion?
Yes, Council President, I'd like to pull for discussion purposes 1E, 1F, and then I would like to register a no vote for 1H.
1E and 1F. Perfect. Councilmember Olivier.
I'd also like to register a no vote on 1H, please.
Councilmember Brettafeld.
I'd like to pull item 1H.
Great. So I'll also be pulling item 1D. Is there a motion for the remainder of the?
Public.
We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wish to comment on the consent calendar, those items that weren't pulled? You can state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Sharon Weaver. I'm Executive Director of the San Joaquin River Parkway and Conservation Trust located at 11605 Old Friant Road, and I'm here to comment on item 1B. This is an item to dedicate an easement, and that easement goes through a city park known as Spano Park, and then down the Bluff Face at the end of Palm Avenue. This is apparently to create a legal access for a parcel in the river bottom. There's a lot line adjustment there. And I was just concerned that there really isn't any information about this item or the purpose of this item. I understand from talking with city staff that this is related to a parcel in the river bottom to which the city would like to work with another nonprofit to create a parking lot down there for a project known as Fresno River West. But the agenda item doesn't specify that, and it just doesn't provide much information for the public. So I was hoping that there would be an opportunity for discussion today, and I would encourage you to vote no on that item. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who wish to comment on any of the items?
Motion to approve.
So there is a motion and a second. Any opposition? CNN motion carries seven zero. Now, we will go to ceremonial presentations, and we do have a special presentation by Councilmember Oliver Baines.
All right. I'm done already? Okay. All right, well, listen, I wanted to just take a moment today and do an appropriate send-off of my staff assistant Tyler Ward. So Tyler's going to be gone on to finish her education, and she's leaving me. This is her last day in City Hall. And I wanted to just take a moment and talk a little bit about Tyler. Most of you all know her in this building. Most of you have had the opportunity to work with her over the last couple of years. And I'll tell you, it's an interesting thing working for a council member, particularly when we're term limited. And so one of the very first things I told Tyler when she came into the office, as I've told all of my staff that have worked with me over the years, we're all here to get better. We all got to grow because we're all going to get out of here in a couple of years, right? We're not going to be here forever. And so I encourage every single member of my staff to grow themselves, to make themselves better, to prepare themselves for the next life. Well, Tyler, of course, has done that and more. She's taken it to heart. She is going to be focusing full-time on finishing up her bachelor's degree. She's going to become a counselor, and I think a history teacher, if I have anything to do with it. And Tyler, I just want to tell you, I appreciate you working for me these last couple of years. You're fantastic. I've watched you grow. I've watched you, I remember the very first day when you were sitting in the office and your eyes were big. You didn't know what was going on. You're like, who is this crazy guy? And then, and now I watch you artfully and skillfully deal with staff around the building, deal with the constituents that come in, and take care of me. You are a fantastic staff assistant. I am going to miss you dearly, and I wish you the best. And so I just wanted to give you a proclamation. We're going to be taking Tyler to lunch during our lunch hour here with the rest of the staff over here. So I just wanted, I wanted to tell you thank you, and I appreciate you. And Madam Clerk, will you please read the proclamation?
Tyler Ward, for your public service, on behalf of the City of Fresno, I extend my gratitude to you for your dedication to the constituents of District 3. Thank you for two years of public service assisting those residing in and doing business in District 3. All of us at the City of Fresno were very fortunate to have had you as part of our team, and you will be greatly missed. Thank you for your hard work and good luck in all your future endeavors. Therefore, be it resolved that we, Councilmember Oliver Baines III, and the Fresno City Councilmembers do hereby proclaim Thursday, June 28, 2018, to be Tyler Ward Day in the City of Fresno.
Oliver, I'd like to, I'd like to add something right here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Hey, Ty, I just wanted to thank you for your help. Every year in October, we do a Make a Difference Day, and you've been out there helping us pass out hot dogs, bottled waters to the, to the players. We placed a lot of soccer on that day. And all other families and grandparents that come out to enjoy the day down at Chick' Chancy Park. We really appreciate you volunteering with us. Thank you. You've done a great work.
Awesome, thank you. We will move on to the approval of the minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes of June 14, June 21, and budget hearing minutes from June 19? No changes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Capriolio, second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? CNN motion carries seven zero. Now we move on to council member reports and comments. Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. This past week, I had the privilege and honor of attending the press conference for the new athletic director for Fresno State University. This fellow is an amazing individual. He is so well-qualified and such a warm person, and such an enthusiastic, exciting person. It was very invigorating for the entire crowd that was there to welcome him. And he was, for instance, he was a student athlete at UCLA. I know there's some SC fans out there, but UCLA, he was all Pac-10 for four years as a defensive lineman. He went on to serve as an athletic director for three different levels of universities, D1, 2, and 3. Plus, he was an assistant coach under Coach Shanahan for the Denver Broncos. So this man is, he's an amazing person, and just want to welcome him. I was there to present a welcoming proclamation to him from all of us at City Hall here. So I look forward to a very prosperous sporting season, if you will, for, and his leadership, along with Mr. Bulldog, President Joe Castro. So look forward to great things coming in our athletic department at Fresno State. Thank you.
Councilmember Brandal.
Thank you, Council President. There's a ceremony today out at the, at the vets home on California Avenue that I wanted to recognize. I was going to try to be there, but then I found out this morning we're going to have a special meeting during that same timeframe. So I just wanted to recognize them in council comments. There is, it's called the Freedom Canes Ceremony. And every year, two local groups, the Central California Wood Carvers and the Sequoia Wood Turners, use their special skills to create personalized, hand-carved eagle-head canes for the vets in our home in Fresno. And so this year, they're giving out 60 canes to the vets. They're all personalized. They're very beautiful. And I just wanted to personally recognize them for serving our vets and how important it is for us in the City of Fresno to have wonderful partners like this that do things for our vets. So I just wanted to recognize them.
Great, thank you. I just have one announcement, which is very exciting. So yesterday, the City of Fresno received notice that we were recipients of the League of California Cities 2018 Helen Putnam Award of Excellence. And we were recognized actually for our efforts in establishing the City of Fresno Youth Commission, which allows our Fresno youth to have a voice and a role in local policymaking process. So next, in our consent items that were pulled, we will be discussing more. But I just wanted to highlight that we just received a coveted award recognizing us as a leading city for the state of California in supporting young people in terms of our programming. This council has supported the investment of young people and paid opportunities. Again, these issues for me are very close to my heart and personal because my first paid job was working for the City of Lindsay in the Public Works Department. And so it's these types of opportunities that shape the future of our community. And so I'm so proud of the City of Fresno, and I'm so proud of the council and the administration that have been true leaders in supporting our young people and ensuring that we are setting and paving the way for these young people to take over after we're done. So I just wanted to make sure that we share that. Also, at this annual League of Cities Conference, which will be in Long Beach, the City of Fresno will be given space within the conference center to showcase our program. So we'll be talking, we're going to be taking some of our young people so that they can expose to other cities and communities the great work that they're doing here in the City of Fresno. Next, we'll go on to contested consent calendar, and we'll start off with item 1D. And so I was the one that pulled this item, and I just pulled the item, it's on consent because there was an approval by this body, but there were some questions that were raised, and so I wanted to give an opportunity, one, for the public to come forward, and then some of those questions to, to be responded to.
Hi, good morning. Last person was taller than I was. Good morning, council members. I am Ashley Warner. I'm a senior attorney with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. We wanted to raise some concerns about this item today, and I appreciate State Attorney Doug Sloan coming to have an initial conversation with me about his interpretation of this ordinance. But we are concerned about the potential impacts of this item on neighborhoods, especially those which are the focus of the city's industrial development plans and which are actually among the most burdened by pollution in the entire state of California, according to data from the California EPA. Councilmember Brettafeld has indicated that one intention of this ordinance is to expedite facilities like the Amazon Warehouse Development. For communities that are overly burdened by environmental impacts, SEQA's intention to provide for holistic environmental review of a project before it moves forward is especially critical. Those communities, especially in Fresno, where we actually have the most environmentally burdened communities, the most top-scoring communities under Calenviron screen in the entire state, that holistic review is really important because they suffer from cumulative impacts of a variety of different pollutants. So by allowing projects to move forward without that full review, we are really concerned that it would be inconsistent with SEQA's provisions that prohibit piecemealing of environmental review. We also are concerned that it's setting the city up to be allowing projects to go forward that haven't been determined to be fully consistent with development code provisions, which are intended to protect neighbors of projects. So even if the city intends to require the developer to rectify it at a later time, there would still be a period where those buildings, which are enormous, if you've driven down and looked at them, for neighbors across the street, they're going to have to deal with those impacts unless and until that's rectified. You know, and then we also are concerned just about the way that this item is moving forward. This is an ordinance that is an amendment to the zoning ordinance. Under SEQA, that is a project. There's no staff report online. There's no SEQA analysis of it. There's no notice of any findings. That it's exempt from SEQA, and all of those things are concerns that would be inconsistent with requirements of SEQA and inconsistent with the development code. So, you know, I just want to bring this back to, to the real, it's not just about code provisions and legal requirements. It's about, you know, the people in our community that are suffering with asthma, premature mortality, cardiovascular disease, and really acknowledging the seriousness of that for those people and making sure we're really protecting them as we go forward with economic development plans and including them in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wish to comment on this item? Great. So I have punched up first, Councilmember Baines, but.
A motion to approve, I think.
Councilmember Brettafeld.
Okay, well, I appreciate what your sentiments. I take those concerns very seriously as well. This is an at-risk permitting, not only for the industrial sites, but also for commercial buildings, for residential buildings, and the industrial sites. And obviously, we're concerned about any issues in terms of development and the impacts. Let me ask the city attorney, you've heard Ms. Warner's concerns with SEQA environmental analysis. Could you address any of that, Mr. Sloan?
Yes, several things. First of all, this ordinance amendment itself is not a SEQA project, so no SEQA is required for approving this ordinance change. This is not in the zoning code, so this does not have to go through the process that would be required of making a change in the zoning code. This is only a procedural ordinance, but most importantly, this ordinance does not change the effects of SEQA. This ordinance would allow for what is actually a discretionary permit. In other words, the at-risk permit is discretionary. If SEQA has not already been done, it would be required to be done before an at-risk permit could be issued. So yes, SEQA has to be done before there's construction.
Okay, so it doesn't preclude any analysis that needs to be done?
It doesn't change anything as far as SEQA is concerned.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I think there was a motion, but we can switch that up. You'll take, do the motion, and then we'll just second it. Councilmember Capriolio. Councilmember Baines.
Thanks, Council President. And Councilmember Brettafeld and I chatted a little bit about this, and I want to just make sure that I, we get it clear. I think that the council member's intention is to not get around environmental work. So city attorney, when an at-risk permit is issued, it would, it would have to come after the appropriate SEQA work and what have you had already been done. Or, talk to me about the sequency of that, sequencing of that.
SEQA is required to be done, if it's required at all, at the time that a first discretionary permit is issued. So it may be that the SEQA has already been done for a zoning change that entailed a project too, and then this would come along well after that. But if this happened to be the first discretionary approval of an entitlement, SEQA would have to be done along with the at-risk permit.
Okay, so nothing, nothing in this ordinance would allow a project to start before that type, before the SEQA studies and what have you have been, have been done?
That's correct.
Okay.
Great. And then I just wanted to follow up on the question about are changes being a project for purposes of SEQA because we're amending an ordinance? Could you respond to that?
Right. Changing this ordinance does not entail a physical change in the environment. This is merely procedural, and so this is not a project for SEQA purposes.
Perfect, thank you. So there is a motion and a second. Any opposition? CNN motion carries seven zero. Next, we have item 1E. This is, that was pulled by, I believe, Councilmember Brandal. It's the approval of the First Amendment and related MOU regarding.
1E.
1E. This is related to Temperance Flat.
Mike, and so with all of our other budget concerns, I just haven't been able to really connect on what this item is about. Could you help me out with that?
Yeah, this item is, it's an amendment to a MOU that was approved back in November, and that allowed the City of Fresno to participate in technical and financial studies, pre-construction activities related to the Temperance Flat Reservoir. So that, that work's been ongoing since the city entered into that MOU back in November. There were some administrative changes recommended by the Steering Committee, the Temperance Flat Steering Committee. And so this, this action today is a request to reapprove the amended MOU.
And so is that MOU with the JPA that, that is convened concerning Temperance Flat? Is, who is?
So there are a couple of different groups. One is the San Joaquin Valley Water Infrastructure Authority. That group is responsible for preparing and submitting the Prop 1 WISIP application. So that work's still ongoing as they work with the California Water Commission through that process. Separately, a group of primarily Friant Water Authority members have formed an MOU to work on these technical and financial feasibility studies. They come together in that the work that the Steering Committee is working on anticipates potential funding from Prop 1. Obviously, we've heard that the Prop 1 funding is, is much less than the anticipated $1.3 billion that was requested. But that's still information that feeds these activities in terms of modeling a reservoir, the financial cost components of it.
Okay, so it's not specifically with the JPA that's been formed?
I'm not sure exactly which JPA specifically you're referring to, but there, you know, this, this group is primarily, this MOU is primarily made up of, of Friant Water Authority members. Separately, there is a JPA, that's, as I mentioned, the San Joaquin Valley Water Infrastructure Authority. That's the group that is led by Mario Santoio.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Great. Is there anyone from the public who wish to comment on this item? If you can state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
My name's Jaime Loza. I've noticed a lot of money, I don't, I don't, tell me if I'm catching on correctly. That's millions of dollars, because I came to another meeting, and I see a lot of money going out, well, not money, paper, okay? I see this economy crashing again, okay? And everybody needs to be careful of this paper that you guys are spending, because it's paper, okay? So every time something's getting granite with paper, we ain't got nothing backing it up. And I say "we" because I'm American too, okay? America's in debt. Everybody needs to start thinking of the future. Because what you're doing is putting your foot in your mouths when you grant a five-year deal with Bank of America. I had a talk last time I was here. I'm a customer of Bank of America. She's a Bank of America old customer. We told you, don't do it, and you guys done it. That's like being with the woman for five years. No disrespect to the people that have been with the woman for five years, but I just can't do it, okay? You guys need to be careful, because the future is going to come. And how much in debt is Fresno going to be? Are you guys going to start using what God gave you guys and start saving this money that you guys think you guys have? Stop granting and start thinking. If it's for the economy, coup. If it's for the people of the streets, coup. If it's programs for kids, coup. If it's for the future of kids, coup. But we need, we'll need to start thinking. Hello, Olivier.
Excuse me.
Hello, how are you doing?
Sir, you can direct your comments to me.
Okay, I'm just looking at everybody. I didn't want to exclude him, okay? I record individuals out of character. I've got 10 restraining orders against me. I've got 10 people out of character. I record people, okay? So if I happen to see you guys out there and I record you guys, don't take it personal. I am very professional. I'm not here to assault or nothing like that. You guys have a nice day.
Thank you. Mike, I had a follow-up question that I just thought of as Council Brandal asked his questions. So when we originally approved this MOU, we gave $100,000, I believe, out of the water. So there's no general fund money, but there is water enterprise funds going towards this. Can you tell me, what did we get out of the $100,000? Because this approval seems to be an additional $100,000, so I just wanted to kind of get a sense of what is it?
We're not, this approval does not include additional expenditures. So the, the MOU that was approved back in November authorized public utilities to spend up to $500,000 over three years for these technical and financial feasibility studies. This, this is just an amendment to roll up some administrative changes into the MOU.
So, but we did, every year, we're kind of going through that plan. So it is a $500,000 allocation. $100,000 was expended for the first year, as I'm reading the, the staff report, or the previous staff report. And then this year, we're paying another $100,000. Is that correct?
Right, and those, those funds are to support the consultants who are developing the, the reservoir model. So to understand the, the inflows into the reservoir, the ability to take your CVP water, put that up and store it into Temperance Flat, the analysis of, of prior water years, and, and information related to potential climate change and how that would impact the new temper, you know, the operation of a new Temperance Flat. And so that's the information that the potential investors need to understand. And so, that's the information that the potential investors need to understand, you know, how this reservoir would be operated, how would you use that, would it, how much additional supply, how would that impact the reliability as a CVP contractor? And then, that information would feed a cost model. So, as potential investors, you know, how much storage, what's the cost of it? You've got the Prop 1 funding, you know, that comes into the cost model. So, that helps the decision-making process for potential investors. So, there's a cost to putting all of those studies together, mostly supported by Stan Tech, who is the consultant for the Steering Committee.
Perfect, and so, this is happening as we're trying to figure out if we're gonna get state dollars for, to build this, or...
Right, there are multiple funding, you know, potential funding sources. One of them obviously being the Prop 1 funding application, and so that process is still underway. There is potential Bureau of Reclamation funding, and then obviously, private agency funding, being City of Fresno and others who may contribute towards the cost of the new reservoir. So, this is the effort to help kind of determine the, you know, the value of investing in this reservoir.
Okay, thank you. So, there is a motion and a second. Any opposition? CNN, motion carries seven zero. Next, we'll go on to item one F. This is approval of a side letter of agreement with the Fresno Police Officers Association representing Unit 4 Personnel Services Department.
Good morning, Council. Jeff Cardell, Director of Personnel Services. Are there particular questions you have?
Yeah, Jeff, I actually just would like you to review this for me. What's in the side letter? Does it change any of the previous agreements we've made about lateral hire incentive package, or does it just extend it?
This is an extension, and it has been really successful for the department in being able to hire experienced officers, as well as officers right out of the academy. So, there's a balance in terms of the new hires that come into the organization.
Okay, so it's just an extension. Could I talk to the chief just for a second?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Jeff. Good job.
I just thanked him for giving me permission to talk to you.
Yeah, right, right? Funny the way that works.
I answered a lot of people.
Hey, chief, you need to read your name and address into the...
You want me to? Where I live is 2323 Mariposa, Fresno Police Department.
You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. I won't need that long.
Chief, could you talk about the effectiveness? This goes back several years now, under Jeff's leadership, and you and I and Mayor Brand put together a package for, an incentive package. Can you just go over with how that's been working, and how many officers have we attracted, that type of thing?
Yeah, I think you know, there was a period of time when we were having difficulty attracting new officers into the Fresno Police Department, and that was recruits, as well as laterals from other agencies. We had just come out of the recession. There were people that were not willing to leave their department, and there was just not a feeling that we were going to be able to attract those. So, the vast majority, probably 90% of the individuals that we hired at the time were right out of the academy, which meant we were getting a lot of new officers in the department, and we didn't have the ability to balance that with the experienced officers. Prior to that, we would hire about 50% of our officers would be experienced laterals coming from other agencies, and 50% out of the academy. So, we were out of balance. This lateral incentive program that we worked on, yourself and some other council members and mayor, has been very successful for us. I will tell you, the first year, in 2015, we didn't have as great a success as we had hoped. We hired 11 individuals that year on the lateral, but those numbers have increased. 2016 went to 12, 2017 it went to 20, and already through the first six months of this year, we've hired 13. So, a total of 56 lateral officers have been hired as a result of that incentive. And so, we're very pleased with that. And as a result, as of tomorrow, we will be 100% full in terms of authorized police officers in the Fresno Police Department. We have the ability to hire 815 officers and 15 Cadet 2s in the academy. Well, as of tomorrow, we'll be at 815 police officers. Many of those will be in orientation or in the training program, but that's the first time that that has occurred since well, well beyond when the recession started.
Well, that's fantastic news. Good job. So, to continue, the incentive package is still a strong need at this time, to get those experienced officers from other departments to join.
Yeah, it not only incentivizes those officers coming, we've done some other things beyond the lateral, or the bonus, hiring bonus. You know, we've also created a platoon schedule in our patrol division, which allows for officers to get every other weekend off, and that being a four-day weekend. And that incentive has not only attracted officers to our agency from other departments, but it's also attracted people into patrol from within the department. So, it's had a benefit as well. So, I see the need, and it does help officers that are relocating to Fresno offset some of their moving expenses. Initially, it's a $2,500 payment that they receive. Once they complete the training program, field training program, they get an additional $2,500. Once they complete their probation, they get $2,500 more, and then 12 months after that, they get the final $2,500. So, it also creates an incentive for them to stick around, even though they might find themselves in a very busy department as compared to where they came from.
Well, fantastic. Thanks, chief. And so, and I know Mayor Brand and I failed to recognize the FPOA, but Damon Kurtz was really involved in those efforts as well. So, I'm gonna make a motion to approve this extension of the lateral hiring incentives.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Councilmember Brenda, and a second by Councilmember Caprero. Councilmember Caprero.
Chief, I just wanted to say, you know, it's been five and a half years since I took this seat, and we've had a great relationship with you and your department, excuse me, and now we finally have hit that magic mark. It's been a long, long trail, but we've got it. We knew we could do it. We could count on you and the FPOA and the people that are behind you and your department, and we all, of course, support you here. So, congratulations. Happy to say I've been a part of that for the last five and a half years.
Thank you. Appreciate your support, all of you. Thank you.
So, we do have a motion and a second. Any opposition? CNN, motion carries seven zero. Next item is item one H.
Yes, I just wanted to, first of all, I want to commend the awards for the Youth Leadership Committee, and I know that's an important youth commission for you, Council President, and I support having our youth involved. My only concern and opposition is just the money being spent to oversee the program, and for that, I just wanted to explain that. It's just, it's about the money. It's $100,000. We're obviously looking as close as we can at the budget to see what we can do to improve every aspect of public safety, and there's a lot of need. And so, for that reason, I can't support it, can't support the expenditure, but do support the commission. Would hope that we could somehow do this, you know, on a voluntary basis, a lot of voluntary programs that exist in our community, and so that would be my hope that we could get to that place. That's all I wanted to add.
Thank you. So, I'll go ahead and make a motion, and second by Councilmember Chavez. I do see Jose here from YLI. Okay. I'll have Councilmember Baines, he's gonna say a couple of comments, and then Jose, if you want to come on up. Councilmember Baines.
Yeah, thanks, Council President. And I want to just chat a little bit about Councilmember Bretfield's thoughts, and just to offer this, Councilmember Bretfield, and I know that you're very supportive of our youth, I know that you're very supportive of the commission, so I don't, I don't think that comes in any question at all. I will say that I think that the money that we spend on the development of our youth is important, and while I don't disagree that there are great volunteer organizations out there, there really are, and that is not to, in any way, say that they don't exist, I think having a professional organization that does this type of work committed to our youth in that way, the money that we spend on that is a small sum in comparison to, I think, the development that we get out of that. So, I just wanted to offer that, and I totally understand your position, and I know you watch every penny very closely, and I appreciate that. And at the same time, I just wanted to say that, you know, we have some obligation up here to invest in our youth. We don't do nearly enough, and we do very little. And so, when those opportunities come before us to develop our youth the way that they've been developed, winning awards, and we get a chance to see them every year, I know your youth commissioner is probably, you met with your youth commissioner, you probably realize it's a fantastic young person, so that doesn't happen on accident. It's a great relationship that they have with YLI. So, I just wanted to offer that. Again, this is not a discussion about whether or not there's support for our youth or not, but I do think the investment in their personal development, that money, in my opinion, is probably well-spent.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Baines. You want to come up, Jose?
Good morning, members of the council. So, my name is Jose. Most of you actually know me. I just wanted to just kind of reemphasize kind of the value of being able to have the youth commission. Over the past two years, the youth commission has come up to propose to be able to create paid internships. That was one of our largest wins over the past two years. The $50,000 that were allocated to being able to create these positions, we're able to pay for 30 paid positions and internships within local government. Within those 30 positions last summer, there was over 1,200 applications. The youth commission had come up with research, presented that before all of you. A lot of the times, within the funding, you know, as a coordinator, one of the things that I've seen is, you know, meeting spaces is one of those huge things. So, for example, the youth had to come up with research, I had to meet with them. So, whether it is having meetings at the Youth Leadership Institute, or having meetings here within city council, I've been having to prepare the youth, and it was a lot of hours that were put in, in terms of being able to create that proposal and being able to show the need for that. Within the past two years, we, the $30,000 that was able to fund 750 free swimming lessons within the City of Fresno, got filled up within two weeks. And again, that was another huge need that, because of the youth, and a lot of times, they've been able to show what are some of the needs that we have in our city. And I think that from, as a coordinator's perspective, I've been able to hear their perspectives and be able to see the fact that sometimes the most affected are the best ones to be able to advocate for the issues that affect them. And I think that within the past two years, we've had such a huge impact in that area. Another thing, just recently, and I appreciate all of the council members for supporting the Youth Jobs Task Force resolution, which is a commitment from all of you to be able to have this task force of public and private businesses, along with young people that are gonna come up with a proposal on a long-term solution. Ultimately, I just want to say, this is actually something that we normally don't see, is young people in these spaces with elected officials and seeing young people with businesses that are gonna come up with a long-term solution. So, in reality, this is a huge investment that is really giving back over the past two years, and there's a lot of other wins. Unfortunately, I'm out of time, but really, it's been an amazing opportunity to be able to see these young people work alongside each of you. And if I can have like, maybe one more minute, you know, District 5, Councilman Chavez, for the grant, young people being able to see what are some great organizations within District 5, you know, and to be able to have this philanthropy opportunity. So, this funding has been able to see, over the past two years, there's been so many victories that have come about just by the support that's come through this funding. And as a coordinator, there's, I wish, it's unfortunate, it's not my salary, in no way do I get paid nowhere near what that amount is. A lot of that goes into our expenses. We always feed the young people for every single meeting, whether it's a youth commission or it's the ad hoc meetings that I'm meeting with them. And so, a lot of this funding goes into the actual programmatic expenses.
Thank you, Jose.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, there is a motion and a second. We'll go ahead and take an electronic vote, because I believe that there's a couple council members that had originally expressed their opposition to the item. Motion carries four three. Thank you. Next, we're gonna go to our 10:00 AM item. And so, the 10:00 AM item is a hearing regarding increasing the annual assessment for track 3884 of Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance District and District 2, Public Works.
Good morning, Council. Aaron Aguirre, Public Works. The item before you is a hearing increasing the annual assessment for track 3884 of the Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District. On May 10th, council approved the adopted resolution 2018-116, initiating the Prop 218 process. On May 14th, the clerk, city clerk mailed notices and protest ballots to all the property owners, initiating the Prop 218 process. The ballots are due at the conclusion of today's hearing, if majority protest process prescribed under the California Constitution. Staff recommends that the conclusion of Prop 218, in absence of majority protests, council adopt the attached resolution. This concludes my presentation. Here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Aaron. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wish to comment on this item?
Council, if I could chime in on a special process here. The process is a little bit different here. During the public comment period, the qualified voters may leave their ballots in the box right in front of the table here, and then when we close the public hearing, that will also close the time to vote, and then we'll need to continue the item until later in the meeting today, so that the clerk's office may tabulate the votes and then report back after the votes are tabulated. The tabulation will take place in the clerk's office in Suite 2133.
Great, so, do we take a vote? Or, okay, so we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item, or also want to drop off their ballots? CNN, so we, now we close the hearing?
Close the public hearing, and then refer to the clerk's office to tabulate the votes.
Okay, perfect, so now we will close the public hearing. The clerk will take the ballots and count them, and we don't have to vote up here, no?
The clerk will report back on the tabulation, and then you will vote.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much. So, she will come back in about an hour to report back. We'll go on to item scheduled for 10:05. This is a hearing to consider the pre-zone application number R17020 and related environmental assessment R17020 filed by Mr. Jeff Roberts.
Good morning, Council President, members of the council. I'm Bruce Barnes with the Development Department. Staff has nothing else to add, other than we do recommend you adopt the environmental assessment and approve the pre-zone annexation application, pre-zone application. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Perfect, thank you. Well, oh, yeah, Jeff.
Good morning, members of the city council. Jeff Roberts, on behalf of the ACME Group, 1396 West Hernan in the City of Fresno. For the record, I'd like to state that we concur with the recommendation of staff and with the Planning Commission recommendation on this item. Be happy to answer any questions for this small infill project, but appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, so there's a motion. Second by Councilmember Caprero. Any opposition? So, what I'm gonna go ahead and do, I'm gonna go ahead and take... So what I'm going to go ahead and do, I'm going to go ahead and take a couple of the general administration items before we go to budget because budget may take a little bit longer. Yeah, but it's not 10:15 yet. So we'll go to item 3B by Public Works. It's an award, it's to award a construction contract in the amount of...
Council president, that item was removed.
Oh, sorry. Item 3C, which is a resolution authorizing the submission of the application for grant funds from the United States Department of Transportation better utilizing investments to leverage development, Public Works.
Good morning, council president, members of the council. My name is Randall Morrison, Assistant Director with Public Works Department. The item you have before you is requesting a resolution requesting authorization to submit a grant application to the United States Department of Transportation better utilizing investments to leverage development, also known as build program. This is to provide for $23 million. Our application will be in the amount of $23 million, requesting additional funding for the Phase Three and Four of the Veterans Boulevard project. Phase Three and Four consist of the interchange at State Route 99 in Veterans and then the extension to, to Herndon and to Shaw. So this would be the, another attempt to capture all of the funding needed to complete the project. And staff will be available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seen none, we'll bring it back. Councilmember Brenda.
Thank you, council president. Just a, a quick, a couple of comments on this issue. So we're very, of course, very supportive and I'll make that motion in a second. But I do want anybody that's been tracking Veterans Boulevard to know that we took another trip to Washington DC here a couple of months ago. At that point, we were applying for what is called the INFRA grant. It's a INFRA, it's a different program than the build. And we were not awarded that. But they informed us that this build approach might be something that we should take advantage of. So we're, now we're going to shift and move from the INFRA to the build. We were also not awarded by the state of California, but I want the citizens of the city of Fresno to know that we are plugging away. We're doing our best to secure funding for Veterans Boulevard from the feds or the state of California. And this motion today will set up the next grant application. So I'm happy to make a motion to approve.
So there's a motion and I'll go ahead and second that. Any opposition? Seen none, motion carries seven zero. Next, we'll go to item 3D. It's an action pertaining to the Herndon Avenue westbound widening project from Brawley to Blythe Avenue. Public Works.
Good morning, council. Again, Randall Morrison with the Public Works Department. The item you have before you is to award a construction contract for the Herndon Avenue westbound widening project from Brawley to Blythe and to adopt a finding of categorical exemption under sequel guidelines. The contract is in the amount of $847,722.30 to award to Dave Christian Construction Company of Fresno, California as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. This portion will complete the, the full build out of Herndon Avenue in this segment. We've already done the opposite side of the street, so this will complete that segment and also build a portion of the multipurpose trail on the north side of Herndon. So I will be available if you have any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seen none, we'll bring it back. Councilmember Brenda.
Yeah, Randall, I just wanted a point of clarification. So is this for westbound Herndon at Brawley?
Correct.
Okay, it's where we get, we get constricted there back to two lanes, is that correct?
Yes.
I, I just wanted to clarify that. Thanks, Randall. And so just a comment on this project as well. And Councilman Capriolio was making fun of me today. Seems like everything's going on in District Two. So this is a section of Herndon that where Herndon is three lanes the whole way. It's been reduced to two. These probably shouldn't have been done like this in the distant past. Even yesterday, Council President Soria and I talked with an individual in her district who has complained about streets that are constricted at certain points. And it really creates for traffic congestion. And some in our community say that it leads to accidents. And so since I've been a councilmember, going on six years now, when I first became a councilmember, there's a guy named Charles that lives in that district. And he's come to me a couple of times and said, Steve, you've got to do something about this constriction. And I, I kept telling him, hey, Charles, it's in the, it's in the list of priorities. It's working its way to the top. So I'm very happy today to say that I'm going to make a motion to approve the widening of Herndon in this final little constricted area. And this one's for Charles. So I'll make a motion to approve.
So there is a motion by Councilmember Brenda, a second by Councilmember Olivia. Any opposition? Seen none, motion carries seven zero. Go, Charles.
Yes.
Next is our, I'll go to our 10:15 hearing. I'm almost on time, Marlene. Thanks. And this is a joint meeting of the successor agency of the redevelopment agency for the city of Fresno and the Fresno Revitalization Corporation.
Thank you. Kearney Palm Shopping Center parking lot is part of an enforceable obligation involving both a disposition and development agreement and a parking agreement that the former redevelopment agency entered into back in 1999. The agreements have terms pertinent to the sale of the parking lot and those are reviewed in your staff packet. Notably, they are that the developer pays $12 a year to lease the lot. It's a public lot, no charge made to the tenants and so forth. The developer has the exclusive right, but not the obligation, to exercise an option to purchase until April of 2044, so over the next 26 years. The purchase price for the parking lot is the market value as determined by an appraisal or $1,270,915, whichever is greater. And the developer is obligated to pay 60% of all rents for Parcel C. Parcel C is the chain grocery store. He's obligated to pay rents that exceed the base of 38 cents per square foot. That building has approximately 50,000 square feet. And that, by the way, that obligation goes away if the developer, if or when the developer exercises his option to purchase. And lastly, on the liability side, the agency has the obligation to replace the asphalt parking lot if necessary due to age or damage. And that is currently estimated at about a million dollars. As part of the wind down, the Oversight Board through its staff asked us to discuss with the developer his interest in exercising the option in the near term. And he made an offer to the Oversight Board for the appraised value of the property, the most current appraised value, which was $791,000, in addition to the excess rents owed, which is $642,000, and the waiver of the agency responsibility to replace the asphalt of the lot. The Oversight Board declined that offer and made a counter offer of a purchase price of $1,270,915 pursuant to the agreement itself. The full payment of the excess rents due, $642,000, excess rents due through June 2018. And the, the offer included the total termination of the disposition and development agreement and the parking lot agreement. And the developer has accepted this offer to purchase. So that is the summation of the staff report. We're asking you, we're recommending to you today to approve this item before you. Thank you. Oh, incidentally, the developer, Tom Beggs, Kearney Palm's LLC, is here also if you have questions today.
Thank you, Marlene. So we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seen none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the dais. I did just want to say, Marlene, thank you for stopping by and for going over this item. I think that it's great to see that we're being successful in disposing of some of this property and some of the benefits that the city will see as a result of the sale of the property. I know that this is in Councilmember Baines' district. I think he may have had some comments. Councilmember Baines, did you have anything that you wanted to add or share? So there is a motion and I'll go ahead and second that. Motion by Councilmember Baines and second by myself. Any opposition? Seen none, motion carries seven zero. Now I'll go to the 10:20 scheduled communication. We have an appearance by Mary Esther Korea to discuss fines she has received from code enforcement. She lives in District Seven. Ms. Korea, so if you want to state your name, address for the record, you will have three minutes.
Thank you. Mary Esther Korea, 3407 East Iowa, Fresno, California. Born and raised here in California, by the way. Okay, on May 2nd, I send it, send the city council this letter and to the Fresno BE and to others. I'm going to do the same thing, but I have to amend it. I want you to hear what I had to say back then. And I'm working on now. Okay, the new squatters. My recent article on squatters inviting boarded homes left out. The most recent squatter parasite, the tenant who moves into, into the, for life without paying rent. During this harsh day, the tenant allows family and friends to move in. The property is vandalized, trashed and destroyed. Drugs, violence and gang activities take place. Remember, I wrote this 2014. The process of eviction is initiated. This is a time-consuming process that takes weeks and to mention the cost to start the process and to follow through with said proceedings. The police favor the squatters. The squatters in turn feel offended and turn against the owner because confrontational verbally and physically abuse. This happened to me. Apparently, sockless have rights, have more rights in property and owners. The property owner is viewed as the aggressor and the bad, bad wolf. The sheriff has a list of mile-long of squatting tenants who need to be evicted. The victimized property owner has to wait weeks, months until the eviction takes place, without them paying it, paying the rent, of course. The place that needs to be boarded, locks changed, which in a waste, a waste of time and money. The boards and locks will soon be history, gone. In my case, not only did the above take place, but the storage room was vandalized, personal property was stolen, most destroyed, and finally, the room was set on fire. I have been to the district council many times. Clint Olivier, the water department, the police, the reports written to the mayor who doesn't respond to complaints. I am not blind to the needs of the homeless. There are 80, there are 8,500 now. But the bank insists on getting their mortgage payments. Otherwise, they foreclose. The city wants the property tax paid with threats of lines, liens for non-payment. The insurance company pays losses reluctantly, but does expect to get its premiums paid on time. In my case, they, because I, they put my RV on, on fire in my storage room, the insurance canceled my insurance. And the city courts and police are so concentrated of these squatters, especially of children, are involved. Why doesn't the city, courts, et cetera, pay the homeowners the rent and lose losses, the unpaid utilities, the cleanup?
Ms. Korea, your, your time's up.
One more second.
Can you wrap up?
Yes, one more second. Tenant continue to live among the accumulating trash. The city can also take responsibility to...
Thank you, Ms. Korea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm making an amendment and I'm gonna, now I'm gonna make amendments here.
Korea, your time is up.
One more second. Now I, now we have code enforcements with Gestapo's tactics, tactics. This is crazy. They're violating our civil rights. Thank you.
Next, we have also an appearance by Gonzalo Arambula to discuss the damage done to his wheelchair. Gonzalo? Gonzalo, if you can state your name, address for the record, you will have three minutes. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Gonzalo Arambula. I'm transient, thanks to my parole officer. My problems continue being, my wheelchair has not been repaired, neither replaced by your human resources office. And also the transportation supervisor giving me the round and he sent me to a handicapped ride office, which is for nothing. They don't deal with any of those things. Everything is handled here in the city hall, which is kind of unpolite and rude against the citizenship and also to a handicap. It's completely inadequate and, and wrong to send someone to that far and that person in the wheelchair go up and down just for his entertainment. And also, I don't understand why this, this whole thing about going back and forward with the city buses, people. So if you please stop all of this bureaucracy, that it really kind of hurt me. So today, I only, I'm only asking then it's just to replace my wheelchair because it can't be, can't be used to the one I used to have. So I'm homeless and I have no penny in my pocket. So thank you, Ms. Soria.
Thank you. Next, what I'm going to go ahead and do, do unscheduled communication. And so I know Jaime Loza, you had filled out a number of cards. Would I, you can come up, state your name, address for the record. And you will have three minutes. You can talk about any of those issues in your three-minute period. Thank you.
My name is Jaime Loza. I got ten restraining orders because the simple fact is, is I got a bunch of individuals that have not only showed up to my family's house out of character. I've got Cal Fire individuals out of character. I've got Fresno sheriffs out of character. I've got individuals out of character. I just got ran down by one of your employees right now for recording outside. Out of character, I got him on film. He'll be on YouTube later. I am not playing. I am going to record everybody out of character. I have video of people out of character. Nobody's doing nothing and nobody's doing nothing, okay? These people have showed up to my house, punked my family, sprayed my dogs, arrested me, false arrests. I had somebody put a firebug on me stating that I was starting fires. I don't start fires. I smoke joints. I don't start fires. But I had somebody put a fucking, I mean, sorry, a firebug on me. Okay? I've got people out of character committing crimes. I got them on video, I got proof. But nobody's going to do nothing. Nobody's going to do nothing. I've got evidence, carbon monoxide poisoning cover-up. I've got it. Evidence, video. Let me know when somebody's ready to help. My family, my four kids, my ex-wife, all carbon monoxide poisoning cover-up. I've got proof. I'm a piece of crap, but gas company ain't. I've got the gas company printout stating carbon monoxide poisoning going into the bathroom window. My, we lived there for seven years. Carbon monoxide poisoning cover-up. My family lived. And I've got somebody trying to cover it up and he's a real powerful man to everybody else, but to me, he's nothing. I'm the only person in this freaking Fresno, California that stood up to this individual. I'm the only person in this freaking Fresno, California, that stood up to this individual. I can't say his name because I got a restraining order. I've got ten of them because they want me locked up to shut my mouth. But guess what? When I get out, I'm gonna open up my mouth again. And I'm gonna record again, too.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment during this time? It's unscheduled communication. You can come right up. Okay, CNN, we'll go ahead and close that. Now, we'll move on to budget. So, we've been having budget hearings for the last couple of weeks. Today is the final approval of the budget. So what we will go ahead and do, we will take input from the public. I know that there's a number of you guys that are here to give some input, and then if any of the council members want to make additional motions, we'll take those motions in order and vote on those, and then after all the motions are disposed with, we will vote on the final budget. So I do have a couple of cards that were filled out. If you haven't filled out a card, don't worry about it. You will still have an opportunity to come up after I've called the individuals that I have on hand. So first, we'll start off with Diane Diamond. And what I'll do, if you can come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will have two minutes.
Hello, I'm Diane Diamond, 893 East Salem Avenue, Fresno, California. And I'm here to put in my two cents in support of approving the budget for a senior center. I've recently discovered a large and lovely dance community, senior dance community, with so much joy and learning and exercise and connection. And of course, dance is but one of many aspects of senior life that would be supported by a senior center. As you know, Fresno is the fifth-largest city in California, yet we don't have a senior center. I'm told we have 700 cities, smaller cities in California, that do have centers. To me, that's remarkable. And keeping my comments succinct, the senior community is underserved in Fresno. And I don't normally do shame, but with affection and respect for Fresno, shame on us. I highly recommend that we come of age as a city and approve a senior center for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Carmen Navarro, and after Carmen Navarro, I have Dave Crosby and Shirley Peters. Shirley can come up. And then Carmen. And then Dave. If you can state your name and address for the record, you'll have two minutes.
Good morning, councilmembers. My first time for something like this, but I've been a senior center enthusiast for a long time. I take the classes at Manchester. It's been very helpful. I'm 83 years old, and I hope to live a number more years, but if the senior center isn't... doesn't come around soon, then I'm probably not gonna be able to take advantage of it. And then there's others that are seniors that would really like to see this happen. I retired at 72 in 2006, and the senior activity center is not only important to me, I think it's important to the whole community because we have a lot to offer. I mean, I was a social worker for several years, didn't become a social worker until I was 64, after I graduated in 1993. I was an intern at the city in the Neighborhood Division, worked with the Tower District in Kings Canyon and Belmont areas, and helped a lot with that. Enjoyed it. Lynn Bowman and Sharon Elizondo, I'm sure you're all familiar with them. Anyway, I thought, well, I have something to say. I'm a senior. I know that some of you are seniors, and everybody, God willing, is gonna be a senior someday. So if you have a heart for us seniors, please include us in the budget because we're important. And the youth that you're concerned with, the things that you're talking about, the roads and all that, that's important, too. It's not that we want to miss or put anyone aside. We just don't want to put aside either. So thank you very much for hearing what I have to say. It's close to my heart.
Thank you, Shirley. Carmen and Dave. And then I have Karen Jenkins. If you can state your name.
Good morning, my name is Carmen Navarro. I live at 1241 North Vagities, and I've had that house for about 25 years. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a voter, and some of you are in your offices because some of us have voted for you. The senior community has been overlooked in Fresno. They've tried in the past to create a senior center, and it has not happened. This is the closest that we've ever come, thanks to Mr. Olivier, Mr. Chavez, Ms. Esmeralda Soria. There's a lot of need in this community, and I want to propose something. I don't see anything in the budget about where the senior center money's gonna come from. I know it says budget, but I didn't see $100,000 in there. But you are asking for $200,000 for each district. How about taking $50,000 of those, if it's approved, and putting it into the senior center? You got a letter with petitions, and you can see the zip code, so those people come from all over Fresno, not just from one section. So I thank you for your attention.
I had Dave and then Karen. Is Dave Crosby here? Crosby? Okay, go ahead, Karen. And then Dave, if you can come, start coming up so that we... because we have a number of people that want to speak, so if you guys just can start lining up. And then John Crawford after. Go ahead.
My name is Karen Jenkins. I'm a retired federal employee, and I'm proud to be in this community, and I'm really glad that you did take this under consideration. I'm kind of angry that you're thinking about dumping it again because it's really important in our lifestyle today to keep as active as we can. I have for 20 years had a doctor yelling at me, wanting to replace my knees. And I went online, like most of you probably do, and read that exercise did as good a job and didn't cause the allergic reactions, perhaps, and all of that. So I've been fighting it for 20 years. He's now passed away. I've survived him. I've survived cancer, and I've survived a broken back. And part of that is because I do exercise at the Manchester Center, and I also have a social group of people there. Those are all important to us senior citizens. You all aren't too far behind us. Remember, seniors is 55. I keep telling my son that. He's 53. I'm 75 years old. I have a 96-year-old mother who still exercises five days a week at her senior citizen in Springfield, Missouri. You should see the center they have. That's 196,000 people in that, and they have a senior citizen center you wouldn't believe because the city council takes care of them. My mother is the president of the auxiliary there. When she needed funds for a refrigerator recently, she went down, and they gave her $46,000 for a refrigerator so they could do their meals. Now, you know, it just takes a community that is involved to get things like this going. We are willing to get out there and get donations to help to get a center built, but you gotta put that initial money in there. We're not gonna get anywhere.
Thank you.
I tried to be nice.
You were very nice.
Council President, may I ask a... how many... I'm sorry, sir. How many folks are we gonna have that are gonna testify about a senior center? Raise your hand. And I think we have several more left. And what I was gonna say is this, and I'm gonna try this, and we'll see if it works. We actually have a... we've prepared... councilmember has prepared a motion relating to that item. I think you all probably want to hear us discuss it and vote on it. I think maybe, if I'm right, you would be pleased with what we are gonna propose. But so I'll just say that we hear you loud and clear. If you all are gonna support the senior center, I think there's a lot of support up here, too. But in the effort of time, you may want to let us... you may want to hear what we're gonna say, because I think you may be happy. So that's all I was gonna say, Council President, just to give us a chance to talk about it because I think you guys may like what we have to say.
So Dave, you can come up, and then I think Councilmember Capriolio is punched up.
Honorable councilmembers, Madam President, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Dave Crosby. I live at 6191 West Birch Avenue in Fresno. It has not escaped our notice that of the 700 communities in California that have senior citizen centers, referenced by Ms. Diamond, three of them are within a stone's throw of Fresno. A tiny community of Huron, California, 6,941 population, Orange Cove, California, 11,044 population, and Kingsburg, about 15,000, all have senior citizen... small senior citizen centers. When you compare Fresno with cities more of our size, Sacramento has a beautiful senior citizen center. Bakersfield has two. Long Beach, which has 30,000 less people than Fresno, at 470,000, has six senior citizen centers. So it's just a fact that, as Ms. Diamond said, we've been underserved for a long time here in Fresno, and it's time to get it done. I moved into the Fresno area about 10 years ago. I lived about five years in Clovis and became familiar with the Clovis Senior Citizen Center there. And then I moved into the Fresno area about five years ago, and I've... you know, the Clovis Senior Citizen Center doesn't check addresses when you walk in. It's a wonderful place. I'm not sure that all of you have had the opportunity of going in, but it's a calm, peaceful place, and yet a busy beehive of activity for seniors, this great spirit, honestly, in this building, and a center, a kind of a hub and a center for activity for seniors, not just in Clovis. As I say, I've been living in Fresno now for five years, and I've continued enjoying the benefits of the Clovis Center. So thank you for the opportunity of speaking, and God bless you and your determination for approving, budgeting and approving the construction of the center. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. So before I go to the additional speakers, I will still give you guys an opportunity if you guys want to, but I did want to give one of my colleagues the opportunity to make that motion that Councilmember Baines spoke of. Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President, and it's an honor to have served on the subcommittee with Councilmember Chavez and Councilmember Soria. And we had some one-time money that we could try to address. And it's hard to take approximately $3.4 million and stretch it over 520,000 people, seven districts, and make everyone happy. But we tried our best, and we bet several times, and we've met with the administration. And as a result, I've got a budget motion here that I want to make, and on behalf of our subcommittee, and I believe the administration as well. So I'll make the following budget motion, which includes the August 2019 sales tax revenue of $9.9 million will be recognized in the FY19 budget with appropriate language to implement the draft as set forth by the city attorney, and that would be inserted in the AAR. That's sort of a... we have to put that on the record to make this whole thing work, so bear with us. So the $9.9 million of the August 2019 sales tax revenue will be allocated to the general fund reserve per the Reserve Management Act. This will achieve or exceed the goal of 10% general fund services. Someone mentioned earlier, I'm just doing a side note here, about the recession coming and all that. This should put us at about, I believe, Wilma helped me, about $30... $35 billion in reserve for the rainy day.
Yeah, roughly, depending on what that amount actually is in August of 19.
So we are... the point is, we are anticipating downturns. We don't want to go through that recession we all went through in the past as council members, and so we're trying to be as well-prepared as we can for that eventual event. Hopefully, it won't come. Now, we have one-time funds of $3.4 million from the FY19 RDA debt repayment. That's a revenue general fund source. That was gonna be allocated toward the reserve, but since we've allocated the $9.9, we have the $3.4, then we can try to do the best we can to stretch it throughout our community, all our districts, and make it work for the benefit of everyone. So with that in mind, instead of putting that in the general fund reserve, we have the following appropriations we want to make. The one you're most interested in is $1 million toward a community/s senior center in my district. I'm the only district without a community center, but we want to blend up a community center and a senior center. We actually want to make it a multi-generational center, so this can get us off the ground. For instance, 10,000-square-foot center runs about $5 million. So we've got the startup money. We can try to make this work, and we can talk more about that a little bit later. The B paragraph, $1 million toward a housing fund. Those funds will be designated first-time homebuyer down payment assistance. Next would be rehab housing as part of that $1 million, and affordable housing developments. Item C, $1 million, I know Parvati will be happy to hear this and his team, $1 million toward a park infrastructure fund designated for maintenance and irrigation projects in all council districts, non-regional neighborhood/s smaller parks. Item D, $300,000 to infrastructure fund for council districts for projects under $100,000. Item E, the last item, would be $100,000 to the city attorney's office for use in law clerks, code enforcement-related expenses at the city attorney's discretion. So those are one-time funds. We're not hiring a position full-time. It's something to help us get through the current crisis that we're facing with code enforcement needs and support. And then the fourth and last item is amounts in excess of the $9.9 million from the August 2019 sales tax revenue and the $3.4 million RDA debt repayment revenue. What is actually received above that would be added to the council office's budget for purposes to be decided by the council when those amounts come in and are known. So we don't know if it's above or below $9.9 million, but we want to try to take, if it's above that, and fold that back into our community as well. So it's a... that's the extent of my motion, and I again support and thank my colleagues, Ms. Soria and Mr. Chavez, for their input, and I hope my council colleagues will support the motion. Thank you.
So we have... Great. Thank you, Councilmember Capriolio. Can you... we do have a second by Councilmember Chavez?
I just want a clarification question. On the $300,000 for council districts, is that divided equally among council districts?
Are you gonna support the motion?
I'm asking Councilmember Capriolio.
Are you gonna support the motion?
Absolutely not. Under no circumstances, but that's... my question's still a point of clarification.
I could amend the motion with... Member Chavez? He wanted to respond, Council President. Member Chavez?
Member Chavez?
That's fine. We could amend it to reflect that.
I'll make that amendment on...
Hopefully, Councilmember Brandell supports it.
Absolutely not, but hopefully.
Councilmember Olivier.
Thank you, Council President. And...
And Councilmember Capriolio, Councilmember Chavez, I'm not going to pontificate. I wanna ask questions. I wanna learn. I wanna, I want something to come out of this that the people who've joined us today, the seniors who have been through so much, I want them to get out of here with some more concrete, more concrete information. And so I know you and I have helped each other. I've crusaded for a senior center. Obviously, everyone knows about your crusade for a community center. I think this is a fantastic idea to blend the two. You and I have supported one another up here and you and I have sparred with one another up here over these things. And so the questions that I'm going to ask you right now are not in an effort to put you on the spot or embarrass or anything like that. I'm hoping that we can perhaps alter this as a team, including everyone in this council, to make something happen. Here's my concern. First of all, I wanna say thank you and appreciate, offer appreciation to the team of council members that went to the mayor and the administration and worked something out to put, to come to some kind of agreement that they believe would be constructive for the city as a whole. You know, I appreciate your work on this and I like what I see here, some of it. But on the, the question I have is for the senior center. Okay. The issue that I have, and you can help me talk through this. The issue that I have is the need for a senior center now versus down the road. The task force, as well as the business plan, both documents, the task force that's been written with the help of the people in this room, as well as the business plan, both call for an interim senior center until a permanent senior center can be constructed. I took the business plan to the administration and we talked about it. And even if we cut, cut, cut and get that down, get that price tag down to four hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, it's two and a half million dollars over five years. The city doesn't have that. If we prioritize seniors right after police and fire, right after public safety, we prioritize the needs of our seniors in our city, we still can't get there because we can't get there for police and fire. So, the cost would have to come way, way down. So I mean, if we look at this whole thing, if we look at the three point five million dollars that has been carved up like a pie, three point four million dollars funds the business plan senior center for five years. We could have a senior center up and running and fully funded as the Parks Department has designed it for five years. And so I guess my question for you is one million dollars toward a community center in District Four. What's the, two questions. Is it shovel-ready to begin construction? And the second question is, when do we cut the ribbon on that facility?
Great questions, Councilmember. So, no, it is not shovel-ready. As you know, it takes, for instance, for a water park at Vinland Elementary, it took me two years plus for a water park. And that was about five hundred fifty thousand dollars. So we have to keep that in mind when we make these commitments. So I'm not sure how long it would take to make it shovel-ready. I know we're working on that now through Parks Recreation. Parvin and I have come up with some plans and cost factors and all sorts of things to blend into this facility to make it attractive to the entire community. So I'm not sure when. I hope we can cut the ribbon within the next two and a half years before my term ends.
And I thank you. And the funding, so you're, is there an estimate of the size and scope of the facility? Do we have an estimate on how much it's going to cost?
Well, we're looking at around, Parvin, help me out if you can, but we're looking at around, well, the ideal center, if we can dream a little, come on up, Parvin. Yeah, the ideal center, I think, Parvin, we had it at a hundred thousand square feet from your former position. If we're gonna talk about dreaming, if that's what your question is.
And Parvin, your estimate was about five million, correct?
Five million dollars.
And then I had facilities and Scott Moser looked into it and it could be as high as seven point six million. And I just pulled Randall Morrison up 'cause I wanted to get kind of a roll of thumb of how much it would take to get it shovel-ready. And we're thinking maybe probably ten to fifteen percent of the total construction cost is what it would take to get it shovel-ready.
Correct. And we, I think at this point, we're shooting it. You asked what would it be my dream? My dream would be the hundred thousand dollar thing that we've looked at, a hundred thousand square feet. And it would be fantastic. Maybe someday we could grow to that. That would be, certainly would be a goal of us. Absolutely, absolutely. But I think what we're looking at is around to ten thousand square feet, about five thousand plus dollars. And Parvin has come up, again, he's a great ally. He loves senior centers, he loves community centers. Absolutely. And so we're trying to figure out a way to make it not only senior and community, but multi-generational. So we wanna have kids a week or two or a month old to seniors a hundred years old. And if we can blend all that together, because the youth can get the benefits from the seniors, the seniors can, at least my mom, who's ninety-one years old, she lives up in the mountains and she had a neighbor move in with three children. Now they call her grandma. So there's an interaction that can occur when you blend up in multi-generational situations like this. So I think it could benefit everybody if we could put this all together. And I think we're on the right track.
I don't want to interrupt you and I thank you for that, Member Capriolio. I am going to say right now, I am not going to stand in your way of this. You've worked hard on it tirelessly and I'm not going to stand in your way of accomplishing this. But if it's going to cost an estimated five to seven million and we have one million, I guess my question for the, Parvin or whoever, where will the other five or six million dollars come from? Has that, has the funding source been identified for that?
Let me take, let me chime in real quick. I know part of the original motion I made was to put the hundred thousand in to get the ball rolling. I have personally been in conversations with Fresno Unified. As you know, they provide programming for our seniors and they are willing to come to the table. And part of that rationale was for them to come to the table with a dollar amount so that we would know how much in programming they were willing to support on an ongoing basis, which they already do, as you know, in Manchester Center. So that was one part of it. The other part of it that we had conversations about was on leveraging these dollars, the one million dollars with state grants, with federal grants, and really exploring those options to help complete the whole puzzle, so to speak.
So the only funding that we have for a senior center now, the interim center, as it were, even if that's a five thousand dollar lounge or rec room or something like that, I mean, excuse me, five thousand square foot lounge or rec room, there's, so there's, with this document, there's, there's no, there's no on-paper path forward to get from here to there. It's, and there's no funding outside of a hundred thousand. So what I'm saying is if.
Councilmember Olivier, can I add to what Councilmember Chavez has said? And I think Councilmember Capriolio can chime in. But I think over the course of the last few days, we've really sat down to try to get to where you're at in terms of what is the plan? Are we just putting a million dollars and then we don't go nowhere? And I think that Councilmember Capriolio probably can lay out. I think we've identified two million dollars at this point that are hard dollars that we have in our possession that we can invest. And that gets us to having that ten percent to get it shovel-ready. And I am confident that we'll probably see this built in the next two years because there's a lot of hard work and momentum to get it done in the next couple of years.
If I can add, and, 'cause I think Councilmember Olivier is asking all the right questions, by the way.
Can I ask you one?
I wanna, me one or Capriolio?
Yes, you.
Sure.
Okay. My question is, I understand the vision and I'm all about the vision. But we did the task force, we did the business plan. And for an appropriation of four hundred fifty, I sound like a guy on TV, for only four hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, we can begin today. We can begin today. And I'm not, I'm not saying this to disparage anything that's coming out of here 'cause it's all fantastic stuff, but there's a path forward that we can start today.
So let me just respond. Beginning is not ending, though. So I think the work that Councilmember, particularly Councilmember Capriolio, has put in on this is not just, not about starting something that really has no insight. It's about creating a plan, putting together the funding so we can actually realize a goal and a vision. I think, yeah, sure, we could put a couple of dollars today. And I can, you know as well as I do that it may never go anywhere. And the city may at some point feel like they've done their obligation by committing to an interim city. What Councilmember Capriolio has thoughtfully put out is actually an entire plan forward to realize a true senior center, which is a little bit more than an interim, and I don't even know what that would look like. So I just wanted to say that putting projects together like this, and Councilmember Olivier, you're very familiar with this. You and I have been here the same amount of time. You usually have to pull together a number of funding sources. You know that we don't have five million dollars, seven million dollars just sitting here to put all towards a senior center. What Councilmember Capriolio has done is taken the first steps. I can tell you that he's laid out a couple of things to me and it appears though he's probably halfway there already. Now, all of it's not contained in this budget motion. Part of the money comes from the budget motion, but he's putting together his own district funds. He's also leveraging some other funds. So what he actually has is a vision for the whole thing, not just the interim. I would say that and now speaking to the seniors, that's what you want us to do. You want us to do it right. No, I can assure you, I can assure you, hold on, I can assure you you want us to do it right. If, 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 well, I know, and if you let me finish, we wanna get to the end. You don't want us to just do something interim and never complete it. What Councilmember Capriolio is doing is giving us something that can be completed. These are complex projects, they're not easy. And so while I appreciate the questioning of Councilmember Olivier, we really do know how, what it looks like to get something done. If we have no plan, it will never get done. What you actually have today is a funding plan to get it done. And so I would submit, I'm a hundred percent supportive of Councilmember Capriolio's vision on this. Nothing happens without a plan up here. We've been here a long time. And I can assure you that if we would not have presented you a plan today, you would not have a senior center. What you have today is a plan to actually get a senior center. And I would support that wholeheartedly. And those are just my thoughts, Councilmember.
Thank you.
I've seen where it's going and I have an idea where it's gonna end up. And I think while knowing why this moment today in a budget does not allocate five million dollars, there is a plan to get there and we've never had a plan, a funding plan before.
And I thank you and you did answer my question. And Council President, I still retain the floor, right? Because I just, I wanted to just share a couple of things. It seems to me, and you all know me on a personal level and you know that this has been an issue that has been, I've been personally interested in seeing this through. And I guess we just, I guess we just admit defeat and begin to attack in a different direction. It doesn't seem like there's willingness here to go through with the white papers, recommendations or the business plan that the Parks Department went through. And it doesn't seem like I'm gonna carry the day with my vision. But that's okay, those things happen.
Councilmember, let me just, if I may interrupt just for a second. There's, I'm not suggesting that I have the answer or this dais has the answer. I am suggesting that you and I, as we've always done on a lot of projects, let's sit down and blend these two up. We both can be winners, which means our citizens are the winners. But if we sit down and figure out and put it together, I think we can come up with a solution, a long-term solution. No Band-Aids, folks, we're not, I call us the cleanup council. What does that mean? We don't kick the can down the road. We make tough decisions and we make them often here, unlike our predecessors, if I can add that. So we're gonna figure this out and we're gonna get it done. And I think we can still put our two heads together, along with Parks and your committee, pick a few people, we can sit down and review these things together and we can reach a solution that's really, really good for the entire community. I really believe that.
Thank you, Councilmember Capriolio. The second item that I wanted to remark on in this, in this motion and I think in this budget as a whole, is, I've never been a big fan of executive power of presidencies and mayors and governors because I believe that a lot of power, too much power and inordinate amount of power rests with executives. But I also am mindful of the history of the city of Fresno in terms of the way it was in the late eighties. The way I understand the city of Fresno history is that the council, the council became very, very powerful and began to abuse that power. And so that's why the voters of the city of Fresno went to the strong mayor form of government to create a system of checks and balances and balance out the power of the legislature, which is the council, and the power of the executive, which is the mayor. If you listen to the old stories of Sal and some others who have been here for a really long time, some of my other friends who were on council many years ago, you learn that what was happening at that period of time is that the council, the council was functioning, the city of Fresno was functioning as seven cities within one. And council members were functioning as seven mini-mayors in a larger city, which is why the people of the city of Fresno went to the strong mayor form of government. That being said, I like infrastructure money. I've always spent it on my district, on things like streets and curb and gutter and sidewalk. Those kinds of items, I think that's good. But I think there reaches a tipping point when it comes to infrastructure money. I think there reaches this tipping point where a legislature such as this one, a city council like this can gain too much power and that could become a problem with the inner workings of the organization as a whole. And so I think my criticism also is, I see council members, my colleagues and my friends who are very interested in putting more and more and more money into their infrastructure accounts. And I don't judge you, I don't judge how you use it, I don't judge you for your desire to put it there. I know that you use it on good things. Obviously, if this passes, my own district, Seven, will be the recipient of quite a bit of infrastructure money. Member Brandal, in an earlier motion, addressed the same issue and put some money in the infrastructure district, the district infrastructure budgets. I think it passed. And so while I don't condemn the system and I don't, and I think I voted for that, Member Brandal, I don't condemn the system and I don't condemn my colleagues. But I'm leaving in six months. And I just wanna caution the people who are still here when I'm gone that, to, caution of the danger of slipping back into the time where there were seven mini-mayors in the city of Fresno, all directing infrastructure, all directing city staff, all directing. So the infrastructure money to me equals this power. And the power concerns me because I think it could upset the the smooth workings of the organization as a whole. So council colleagues, I just wanted to caution against that, that accumulation of money. The rollover that we're rolling over to next year that we haven't spent yet is two point one million dollars. And yet we're getting hundreds of thousands of dollars more into these infrastructure accounts. I think that it's probably prudent to find that sweet spot or that tipping point where we no longer work to accumulate these massive funds. And I'm not saying this because mayor asked me to. I'm not saying this because the previous two mayors asked me to. Nobody asked me this. This is just like a few parting comments and a word of caution from someone who's been here for a number of years and is on his way out. And the final thing I'll say on that is that, you know, we are a policymaking body, we are a legislature and we are not executives. And I think that, yes, we can do good work with infrastructure funding, but it's just a caution for those that Member Baines and I will leave behind. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Councilmember Brettafield.
Councilmember Brettafield.
Yeah, a lot of things that I want to address. First of all, in terms of the senior citizen center, I, I don't have any problem funding that, that's been in need a long time, a million dollars towards making this happen. It, it doesn't matter to me if it's in District Four or Seven, it's just that it's available and something that meets the needs of our community. So, having said that, that's something that, that I'm very clearly supportive of. What I'm not supportive of is another, the other ways that this additional 2.4 million dollars is being spent. You know, budget, budgets are about priorities, we always, we always talk about that, and we always, all of us who run for these offices, talk about public safety and we're gonna make our city safe, and we're gonna get more police, and we're gonna get more fire personnel, and that's gonna be our top priority, but that's not reflected in this budget, that's not reflected in this 2.4 million dollars. And to, to make my point, I want to read a letter that our police chief just wrote to all of us just the other day, in fact, I think it was yesterday. And before I do, I want to address, we just, as you may know, had an item on the agenda that was brought forward by the mayor, which was a proposal to put on the ballot, a tax for public safety. Why did he do that? Because there's a tremendous need for public safety. He's trying to address what's going on in our community. And there are so much need for officers, community service officers, 911 dispatchers, people in fire department, more firefighters, aging equipment, and there was a lot of intensity to that. I had meetings with the Police Officers Association, I spoke with the people from fire, and the need is real, the need is great, and this is ignored, this is ignored here. Instead, we're funding council, infrastructure budgets, and housing funds, and park fund, and other things, everything, but what we were going to be addressing, which was this intense need that we have for public safety, and that's why a parks proposal was, a tax proposal was proposed to put on the ballot. This letter came from Jerry Dyer, Police Chief Jerry Dyer, he wrote it yesterday, and I want to share it with the public, and I asked him if it was okay, and he said it was. As the police chief, I generally do not share publicly all the incredible demands on this department and the inability for our officers to respond to calls for public, for police service, in some cases for several days. My main role is to keep our citizens safe and to be the voice of calm for our citizens. Perhaps my voice has been too calming. Unfortunately, far too often, people only focus on crime reductions, as if that is our only measure of what constitutes a successful police department in a well-served city. As you are aware, we've had to shift resources in order to minimize crime in Fresno, but at great expense, which has hindered our ability to respond to emergency calls or investigate certain crimes timely, to include sexual assault cases, domestic violence, financial crimes, and other property-related crimes. The same holds true in terms of traffic safety. In 2017, 52 families had to bury a loved one in our city due to a traffic collision. That is in addition to the 56 families who had to bury a loved one who was murdered. You are correct, and he's, he's responding to the head of the FPOA who had also sent a letter. You are correct in stating, he's referring to the president of the FPOA, that our dispatches are not able to answer 911 calls immediately. The reality is there are significant number of 911 calls that do not get answered at all, or 911 callers who are on hold for five minutes or longer, waiting for a dispatcher to answer their emergency call. Now council, do we think that this is okay? I don't. I don't know why we're funding 2.4 million dollars when we're not answering 911 calls. When somebody in this room needs somebody, a police officer, don't you think 911, the dispatcher ought to answer the phone call? I do. I don't think we should be funding our infrastructure budgets, I think we need 911 dispatchers. That's why the mayor was putting a sales tax initiative on the ballot, and yet that's not what we're doing here.
Councilmember Brettafield, I just, if I may, of the dispatchers, the employees that you're talking about, as I preface my comments, this is a one-time fund, we only have this one-time fund, and that we can't spend this on ongoing revenue, or ongoing expenses without a revenue source.
Yes, we can.
Well, I appreciate your input, but yes, we can.
There's a need, there's a way to find other resources, but just spending it on this makes no sense. We need to focus our priorities on what we said we're gonna do, which is make our community safe, not pad our infrastructure funds. Let me finish the, the letter, please. The question we must ask ourselves is what level of service and protection do we wish to provide to our citizens? Are we satisfied with the number of shootings, carjackings, robberies and burglaries that are occurring? Are we satisfied with not responding to a burglary for two days? Are we satisfied with 911 calls not being answered? And are we willing to allow our current level of service and protection to diminish over the coming years as we have no future plans, hiring plans for officers and civilians due to a lack of projected revenue? I'm not satisfied. However, I am limited as the police chief when considering the shortage of personnel, the changes that have occurred in California laws, that have weakened our criminal justice system, and increasing the demands on our police department. I just spent the morning at the hospital kneeling, praying, and crying at the bedside of 17-year-old Nick Halls as his mother cried uncontrollably. Nick was shot in the head Sunday night. This senseless shooting occurred in close proximity to, and within a few minutes of two other random shootings in the northern part of our city. Innocent citizens being shot, at or shot in attempt to rob them. Yesterday, I spoke with a 24-year-old girl who was physically assaulted by an intruder who forced his way into the home in an affluent home in northeast Fresno. The subject held her at night, the suspect held her at knife point, kidnapped her and stole her car, all in broad daylight while she was holding a one-year-old boy in her arms. This young lady cried hysterically as I spoke to her, she will never be the same. I also spoke to her parents and the owner of the home multiple times, all of them are devastated. All these tragedies, are these tragedies okay? Can we prevent them from occurring in the first place or solve them more quickly if we had more resources? The answer is yes. I know we can do better than this, but not with our current resource levels. I am concerned that we become complacent as the city have grown to tolerate certain levels of crime. We should not, and we cannot. Thank you for fighting the good fight. I ask Police Chief Jerry Dyer, if you would please come up, I just have a couple of questions This is, this 2.4, actually 3.4, but it's 2.4 million one-time monies. Is there anything you can use 2.4 million dollars for, for one-time monies now? Replacing cars, police equipment, any way you can see the need for dispatch, 911? Of course, it's up to the council to come up with an ongoing source, but anything you can do with 2.4 million dollars other than what we're doing here?
I think all of you know that, over the years, there has not been a plan in place to replace dilapidated equipment in the department. We are now pursuing that through the replacement of police cars, whether that is on a five-year cycle and, and making annual payments, or that is one-time money to pay for those vehicles, whether unmarked or marked vehicles. We have a 1977 SWAT bus that is frequently being towed to various locations because we can't have replacement parts for that bus. There are a number of other needs in the department. As we know, dispatchers, police officers, clerks, crime scene investigators, however, those require ongoing funding, which is why those were not put in the budget, because it did require ongoing revenue, projected revenue. But there are a number of one, one-time needs within our department to replace some of the aging infrastructure of equipment, some of the facility needs that we have, and so yes, the answer, obviously the answer is yes.
Okay. Police Chief, I, I first of all want to thank you for the letter. I, you know, there's, there's a lot of pain going on in the city. As this proposal, this tax proposal was addressed, I spoke with many people in your department, and the, the need is great, the need is great, and I think it's completely unacceptable that we don't have people responding 911 immediately, that we don't have officers coming out, that when people's cars get stolen, they have to file online reports, and I think every dollar, every penny, every discretionary penny should be going to public safety, either police or the fire department, not these other things, because the reality is we have to make our city safe. And as you all know, and you've outlined, it's, it's not so much that there's something we're doing wrong here, is, is the policies that we have to deal with from Prop 47 and 57, it makes your job difficult, the releasing of criminals into our streets and making it unsafe, but we all, as policymakers and people who oversee this budget, have the responsibility to follow through on our promises that we're going to make the city safe and do everything with every penny that we have to give our police and fire departments the resources that they need. This does not do that, and I will not support that. And is there anything else you want to add before I ask Chief Donnis to, to come up?
Yes, yes, I, I want you to know that, how painful that email was to write to all of you. And, and I didn't do it in a callous manner, I didn't do it in a thoughtless manner, I just put some, put some thought into it. And, and it was after the last few days of spending some very emotional times with some victims in our community, and reflecting back on where we are as a police department compared to where we were in 2009. We still have fewer police officers today than we did in 2009, and the demand for our services has skyrocketed. The incoming calls to our dispatch over the last 10 years has increased by 22%, yet we have 8% fewer dispatchers in there. And those calls translate into increased demand in our officers in the field. The demands of dealing with individuals that are in emotional crisis and mental health, the individuals that are out there homeless that we get repeated calls on, the demands are incredibly great, and I, I apologize as a police chief for not perhaps keeping all of you as informed to the degree that I should, so that you do know what the true needs are within this police department. As I look at this council right now, there are five council members up here that have had their homes burglarized, and some of you, multiple times. Steve Brandow, twice. Esmeralda Soria, twice, as I recall. Luis Chavez had his home burglarized. Gary Brettafield, home burglarized. Clint, home burglarized, and I believe you also had a, another crime.
Car. Mine was a car.
Yeah. Lee, Lee Brand, our mayor, home burglarized.
Chief, don't forget.
Oliver Baines, burglarized. That's not normal in cities across America.
Chief, don't forget, I was sleeping in my home with my children when we were burglarized, and it's awful. It's awful.
So, everybody on this council, and if I asked that question in any other major city in America, I wouldn't get that response. We seem to have grown tolerant of crime in our city, not out of any other reason, just the fact that we've gotten used to it. And I think it's time, it is time as a city, that we say no, no more. We're gonna commit the resources to public safety, to the police department, so that we can go out there and do the job that our police officers want to do, and the job that our citizens expect us to do and are deserving of. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and you know, the, the mayor and I, I, I respect the mayor, he is a friend, and we differ on some things, you know? There's this mandatory rental inspection program, he knows that I, I haven't supported, that's, that's 1.4 million dollars. I mean, again, I know we have issues with apartments, and we have asset and all of that, and we're getting the job done, but I think we need to be focusing all resources. $800,000 to maintain Fulton Street, I don't think that's what we should be spending the money on. I think we need to take a real hard look, again, at the resources that we get, the budget, the money that people give us, and allocate it where it truly belongs. 911 calls not being answered, being any delay for that should be completely unacceptable, and we should commit every dollar to make sure that happens. Chief, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, council.
Thank you. And Chief Donnis, please. Any, same holds true, Chief, for, for the things I said to Chief Dyer. There's 2.4 million, if we keep the 1 million for the senior center, any one-time monies that you can use 2.4 million dollars to replace infrastructure, trucks, equipment?
Absolutely. I, I'm just gonna echo Chief Dyer's comments. We have fire stations that haven't been repaired and now going on 15 years. These firefighters live in them, 365, 24/7, there's three to eight of them at a time so they get worn out. We have apparatus that need to be replaced beyond the current replacement program. There's, there's needs throughout the city, we have equipment that hasn't been replaced in years, and usually we do it with emergency purchase, because we've gone to the limit and beyond. So absolutely, the answer is yes.
Well, thank you, Chief. Council, priorities are reflected in this budget. I don't need the money for the infrastructure, I need the money to give to our fire department and to our police department. I don't think we should be spending this 2.4 million dollars this way. We ought to follow through on our promises and our pledges to the people that put us here to make our city safe, and we should not be comfortable with 17-year-olds being shot in the head and people being kidnapped, and all of us being victims of crime, and people here being victims of crime, and we can't forget why we're here. As this stands, I will not be supporting this.
Councilmember Baines.
Thanks. Council President, is, is it okay if we make additional motions at this time?
Yeah, you can go ahead.
Okay, great. I have a, I had a motion I wanted to make, but also wanted to, there's been, there's been a lot of discussion about the subcommittee's motion, and first of all, I wanted to thank you guys for doing some work around this topic. You know, you, we're debating 3.5 million dollar, well, 3.5 million dollars, you would think we were talking about 341 million dollar general fund at a 1.1 billion-dollar budget, but we're not. We're just talking about 3.4 million dollars, and I've kind of listened, council members responding, and I want to first thank, also thank Councilmember Brandow. You know, last week, Councilmember, you, you made a motion regarding the recognition of the additional 9.9 million. You also made a motion as a, with a way to address the 3.5 million. You, you actually came, in my opinion, with a thoughtful approach, and, and while we may have differed on part of that, I thank you for your work and your effort on that and bringing forth kind of a thoughtful idea about what we as a council should do. It was a good discussion. And I listened to a couple of my other colleagues, you know, one of my colleagues is, I'm kind of hearing some motion hijacking down on the other end, and while it's, in my opinion, is very good to debate issues and debate a motion, the merit of a motion, or what have you, I've kind of listened to council members, one council member talked, talked very passionately about a senior center, and, and we agree on that, but I never heard a motion about a senior center, about how to fund one in this, in this budget cycle, and I would have supported it had you came with one. Councilmember Capriolio actually did some work, this may not be perfect, I'm not saying it's a perfect motion, but he did some work and came up with money to fund something. And it, and, and look, folks, this is hard work up here, finding money to put things together, it's, it's not easy. And we can feel passionately about an issue, but it actually takes work to put something together and get something done. And so, while this may not be perfect, Councilmember Capriolio did work to begin a process, and in his tenure here, he will realize the goal of a senior center, and I commend him for that. You know, and I don't disagree with Councilmember Brettafield about the, the need for public safety. Councilmember, I know where you stand, we, we, we share a lot of similar thoughts on this issue. But you know, when the opportunity was made for this 3.4 million dollars left over, you supported a motion for a fire station. That would not have added, a single police officer would not have addressed the 911 calls, would not have added a single firefighter, that entire balance of the money would have been spent on a single asset that would not have done a single thing for public safety in reality. Well, we can probably debate that, but it would not have done every, it would not have done a lot, right? I mean, we would have, in, in context of the need, it would have been, we would not have been adding resources to those things, because I agree with you, everything you said I agree with, everything, and you know that I do. We, we, we spoke in detail about it, but again, there was no motion made to that effect. Councilmember Brandow did make a motion about it, although it was different, but it wasn't to all those things you just spoke about. So, my feeling on that is, you all had the opportunity to make motions on this, on these remaining funds, and you didn't. And now, when other council members have put together some thought and effort into what I thought is about as thoughtful- I thought is about as thoughtful of a motion of a way to spend a little bit of money as they could, they're kind of being attacked for it. You know, and, and listen, while I understand disagreements of opinion, offer a different motion. Put some thought into something and bring something for this body to debate and discuss. Don't tear down the councilmembers that did a lot of work and put a lot of effort into bringing something, bringing something for us to consider. We don't have to support it, of course, but I, I, I just think that there, there should be some recognition of the work that it takes and not to hijack their motion. I'm, I'm happy to debate a competing motion, and if, if you feel the priority should have been different, but you all supported something very different. When, when the opportunity was made, there wasn't a motion made about a fully funded senior center for the 3.4, 3.5 million dollars to do the interim, and it could have been. That could have definitely come from Councilmember Olivier. Councilmember Brettafield could have happily made a motion to use the additional 3.4 million to fund all the things that she, both chiefs just got up here and talked about, but you guys supported something different. So I agree with the, I agree with the issues, I agree with the need for public safety, I agree with the need for a community center, but I don't think that it's fair to attack the councilmembers that put in work on a motion and thoughtfulness on a motion today. So I just wanted to say that for the record, I, I think there's been a, you know, this, this issue, they've been, from my, my perspective, I wasn't on the subcommittee, but I, I do recognize the work that it takes to offer something this complex, and also to get the buy-in of the administration. I wanted to thank the administration for working with the council subcommittee, city manager and staff and the mayor, I don't know if the mayor's in the room, but you know, I know that, that you all worked with them, and I appreciate that. It was a joint effort, not everyone agreed, and these things aren't easy. So the, the motion that was read today by Councilmember Capriolio with the help of Council Presidents Soria and Chavez was hard work, and I commend you guys for it, and I'm happy to support the effort that you guys did. And if my colleagues have competing motions, I'd be happy to, to discuss those too, but not to hijack their motion, offer a competing one that's, that has a little bit of thought into it. With that being said, I've been, been deeply bothered this budget cycle by a single issue, and none of you are going to be surprised with me. A few weeks ago, I asked the fire chief in an effort to really help, at least it was my intention at the time, to help with what I thought were low staffing levels in the fire department, trying to figure out how many firefighters we needed in order to help that. That effort, you know, my questioning had backfired, and my intention backfired, actually, and I'll just put it that way. And over the last few weeks, we've had a, a number of conversations where I've, where I, you know, frankly, have just not been satisfied with, with the answers. I still, to this day, and I've shared this directly with the city manager and the fire chief and anyone that will listen, so, and some of my colleagues have heard me say this, to this day, I still don't know how many firefighters we, we need in the city of Fresno right now. I don't, I don't, I don't have that answer. And it troubles me. It troubles me greatly because I am, as all of us up here are, I'm a big supporter of our fire department and our public safety apparatus, entire city of Fresno. But when I can't seem to wrap my head around staffing levels and how line items and budgets are interpreted, that's a problem for me. I've always been pretty straight up with, with everyone in this room, everyone in this dais, rather, and everyone in this building about how I approach things. I recognize that in our, in the fire budget, I see a overtime and staffing budget that's, that is, that's lower than what it's actually going to be, and it's banking on, you know, carrying money over from positions that are going to go unfilled, that we leave vacant. There's a debate about our relief pool that I quite frankly don't completely understand. There seems to be a difference of opinion from the rank-and-file firefighters and the management on what the relief pool should be, where it should be at. I don't understand, I still don't have a clear answer on what that is. It, it just was very, very sadly confusing, and it shouldn't be confusing. Shouldn't be confusing for me, and I'm not happy about, about how it all has, has transpired. And I've been very direct to, with the city manager about that, and the, and the mayor, and the fire chief as well. So I'm going to make a motion today. We are, I, I know, and I'm very sensitive to the fact that we have our North Central firefighters that are probably, from my understanding, going to be returning back to the city of Fresno. Is that true, city manager?
That is true, that's our understanding.
Okay. And how many firefighters does that represent?
Chief?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
Thank you.
So, city manager, with, with that being the case, and fire chief, whoever wants to answer, it doesn't matter to me. With that being the case, I know we have 300, it's my understanding, we have 311 firefighters now that are currently working in the city of Fresno, where we have 334 positions that we are allotted for. If we are bringing all 39 back, does that mean we need to go to 340, or 300, I'm sorry, 350?
That's still to be determined, but I suspect that we probably will yet because all of those, all those individuals will need to have a home.
When, when do we, when, when do we anticipate those firefighters coming back to, under the city of Fresno's umbrella?
The answer to your question is, we need 100 firefighters on duty each day in this city. We've been really clear about that the last few-
Well, what we haven't been clear about is how many firefighters that means we need to have on, hired to do that right now.
But to answer the other question is, there is a window of a year, starting July, for the agreement to expire. I suspect North Central asks for a six-to-12-month extension.
Okay, six-to-12-month extension from-
So they can stand up their own department.
Okay. So we, we-
It could be less, if they get it done in this next year, which would be surprising, but it's not out of the realm of possibilities.
We realistically expect them to be back in, up under our, do we, well, let me ask it this way, do we realistically expect those firefighters to be back, and I'm saying home, under the city of Fresno, this fiscal year?
I don't, I, I, I don't think so. I don't think they'll stand up a department in 12 months.
Okay.
Could they do it in 13? Will they do it, ask for 18 or, or 24? They haven't come to us yet with, with a proposal on an extension. But if they don't ask for an extension, they will be back under the city of Fresno, July 1st.
Okay.
Next year.
Okay. So the, and I don't know if you're the right one, or Jane, or Wilma, but regarding when they come back, does that mean we need to add positions to the already positions we have? Is that what that means, or is that what that doesn't mean, or?
I believe that, that probably at that time, we would probably come to council with a par amendment to, to add the, the appropriate number of positions, yes.
And what would that be?
Whenever-
What if it's 39, what would it?
Yeah, whenever they come back, whenever-
But I guess I'm asking, is it 39 on top of what we have now, or is it 39? How does that 39, how is that 39 going to be realized with the, with the number of positions we have authorized?
Those, those positions would be, those individuals would be brought back and put into whatever vacant positions there are within the department at the time. If there are not sufficient vacant positions within the department, then they would, then more positions would have to be added in order to have each one of those individuals to have a home.
So, so, oh my gosh, wrong number. I'm doing some math, because I want to ask the right question. So if we have 334 positions authorized right now, does it mean we need to add, go to 373? Or do, does that, or do we say we have 311, and then we add 39 and we go to 350? I'm trying to figure out, what are, what are we going to move? How many, how many vac, additional vacancies are, I mean, how many additional positions are we going to add to what we have now?
Councilmember, part of this is, it's such a, it's complicated, I can see why you believe it's complicated, but we're more intimately familiar with this. It has to do with the relief pools, and the, the more we go down in our relief pools, so we get into the negative numbers, that builds even more capacity. That 23 gap between 334 and 311 becomes even larger. So there's more homes, if you will, for these firefighters to come back to in this current budget. That will decrease the number of added positions or FTEs that you, that the city will have to make available going forward. So that number will change as we keep a treading away until this transition actually happens.
Okay. So I'm, thank you, Chief, I, I, so this is what I'm, what I'm, what I'm going to ask staff to do. I think we should know what the number is, and I, and I, and I know why it seems complicated to me, and I know that it's not complicated to you, Chief, but it is to me, and I think it is to my colleagues too, and, and we're policymakers and we have to adopt a budget and we don't understand. And I'm, well, I'm going to say I don't understand, and I would like to. So, city manager, I, I, I need to know a timeframe, because I want to be realistic, of when you and the fire department staff or what have you can come and present to me what that is going to look like when, when our 39 firefighters come back under the city of Fresno's umbrella. I want to understand what that looks like for the relief pool, I want to understand what that looks like for authorized positions, I want to know what that means, I want to know if it has any impact on our budget or not, or what have you, because these are questions that I don't have answers to, and it's not just that easy for me to understand.
And I would, I would recommend that we take a couple months, two to three months, to understand what's really happening, happening with North Central, look at these positions, the overtime, and I understand where you're coming from, and I do appreciate all the time we have spent on this item. You know, right now, I recommend that we leave the PCNs as they are, funded as they are, we'll come back to you.
Well, I can't even make a recommendation of PCNs yet.
Right, I'm just, I'm just sharing with you based upon, you know, our discussion and, and the, so Jane and I were talking, I mean, worst case, probably we would, let's take a two, a couple months, two to three months, to, to analyze, look at North Central, look at our positions that we have, overtime, relief pool, as you said, and the vacancies, and we can come back with a recommendation. And I'm happy to work with you on that on the side.
No, yeah, I, I understand, city manager, I, I, I know that you are, and, so let me say this, I, I was going to make, I was going to make, I was going to make a motion, and I, I want to understand the North Central, I do want to understand the North Central dynamic better, because any, any motion I make, I don't want it to be harmful to the fire, the fire department, that's not the idea. The idea is to have clarity and for me to understand what's going on, though, and for, for this, this council to understand. So, and what I'm going to do today is, I'm going to reserve my right to make a motion. I know that at some point, I know that at any point during the year, I can make a motion regarding the PCNs if that, if that's appropriate. So, city manager, I'm expecting within 60 to 90 days for you to have come back to me in this body and explain in some great detail and understanding to our, our satisfaction what we can expect when they come back, what the relief, what's going to happen in the relief pool, what our over, our true overtime projections are. And at that point, we'll see if any adjustments need to be made.
Councilman Baines, I think we can make those adjustments when they come back, too. I think that's what the assistant city manager just said, so we could make decisions today that when we are really, truly faced with the North Central situation, council can make those, appropriate those new positions at that time, too. Wasn't your initial goal to square with the public how many fighter fighters were saying on this piece, in this document that we're planning on hiring, but we really found out that we don't have any plans of hiring?
Right.
And then, and how that relates to other numbers in the fire budget, right?
No, that's exactly it, Councilmember Brandow, what, yeah, the, we don't plan on hiring 23 firefighters.
Right.
We have 311 right now, we have 334. We don't plan on hiring 23. Fire chief says we need 100 firefighters on, on staff every day, but I don't know what that translates to, and does that mean that if we hire all 23 firefighters that we have 100 firefighters? No, she said we need 75 more hired, I think. Was that right, chief? 75 more firefighters hired to have, to have 100, 100 every day, but I also know that that doesn't work because we don't have the equipment to, to suit them and all that other stuff. So there's a whole, there's a whole other thing that goes into that, but I still don't know how many, based on what the equipment that we have today and our, the, the way we operate today, what the number is this year we plan to hire with the equipment we have. So yeah, that, that, I don't, I don't have, I don't even know the right motion to make to square that up, councilmember, and I'm, I'm struggling because I don't want to do anything that's, that adversely affects the, the fire department, but you know.
It would be, wouldn't it be a motion to get the number of firefighters that we were actually planning on hire and just make it that number?
They don't, well, if I knew what that number was, well, I don't know what the, I don't know what the number is.
My recommendation is to give us the 60 to 90 days. We can come back with a complete plan, learn more about what's happening with North Central, the timing, vacancies, the, the overtime issue, et cetera. And so that's my recommendation, because we all need, we, we do need to, we, we need to learn more, especially with North Central, present it to you all, and then we can go from there.
Yeah, it's really not a North Central problem. We can deal with North Central when North Central's in front of us. I mean, the assistant city managers just, just said that. It's the existing problem, is what Councilman Baines originally was talking about, and so we could either blend in and confiscate, confiscate the, the issue with the North Central problem, or we can just deal with the problem in front of us today, which is a lack of actual transparency with the community, and then come back and deal with North Central separately when it's in front of us.
Well, councilmember, what I was going to do is I was going to make a motion to, they have three, there are 334 positions authorized, there are 311, that leaves us a balance of 23, 23 firefighters that we are not going to hire this year, at least.
Twenty-three that we-
Well, I don't know for, I don't know if we're going to hire, I don't know how many of the, the, the 20, the 23 that's authorized that we're going to hire, and that, that was what I could never get a number.
What happens to that money, Councilman Baines, when we don't hire them?
Well, what, what that money's going to be used for, and it translates, Jane, what, the, the 23 vacancies translates to about how much? About 2.2 and a half million, 2.6 million dollars, something like that?
About 2.5 million, yes.
The idea, councilmember, and I know you know this, but we're, we're, I'm going to say this for the public, is that those vacancies, that money is moved over into the overtime budget to pay overtime. And while I understand that that's, that's, that our fire department uses a lot of overtime, what I've always maintained was, I'm happy with having the overtime budget be accurate.
Right.
I'm, I'm happy with that, not necessarily just holding vacancies, moving money over into a line item later or what have you. So that's what I, that's the issue I'm trying to square.
Yeah, that makes sense. I would be, I think the public would rather know what's actually happening rather than what we want them to think is happening, and that's definitely where I'm at, so.
And what I'm, what I'm, what I don't know yet is, is I don't know how much, how many firefighters we actually do plan to hire this year between 311 and 334. And that's the number that I could never get, is well, how many of those are we going to hire? How many, how many above 311 do we think we're going to hire, regardless of attrition and what have you? You know, I know kind of, for instance, with the police department, when we say we want to hire 850, we're trying to hire 850. I don't necessarily know if we're going to get that number, so that's been the, the conflict I've had, and you're listening to me talk, talk about it out loud. So I want to move money over, city manager, this is what I want to do, I want to move money out of the PCNs into the overtime budget where it's accurately reflected. Now, I don't know how much overtime we need to put over there, so that was the other issue I was having. I wanted to, I wanted to accurately reflect in the budget that we are going to adopt the money, have the money in the appropriate line item, and have it be reflective of that. And that's what I've struggled with this whole, the last three weeks, on how many- And that's what I've struggled with this whole, the last three weeks, on how many, how many, how much to move over out of our authorized positions into the overtime line item, so that we can accurately reflect what, what we're gonna spend in overtime. I can, I can guess it's probably gonna be somewhere around six million dollars if I look years past, and we're probably about two million now, but.
We can probably, what we can, what we can do is we can go back and take a look at how many vacancies the fire department currently has, and then calculate how much overtime it would take to cover those positions and move that amount out of salaries down into the overtime budget.
And the result of that, with the, with the result of that with authorized positions would be what?
Well, right now, I'm, I'm not, I, I think it's, Chief, if you can address, because I don't know how many vacancies you have right now.
Well, the last number I had was twenty, was, oh, I don't know vacancies, I know what we authorize for.
So just to recap, the, the vacancies is about two point four million. Last year, we were over in our overtime by one point seven, that's beyond what we appropriated. We were over by two point two in our shift replacement. If you draw down from the vacancies to cover those, that left about one point five million out of balance. Fortunately, we had the OES out, out of county assignments, which brought in about one point four million, and that covered the nut, so. The, all the two point four, if you were to take, you know, although I wouldn't recommend this, and, and I'll tell you, from the perspective of the firefighters, right now, they are, along with the police department, is, they're really, really on their heels. And so to now make the motion to eliminate positions, then creating this fear that there's no positions available to put them, when North Central goes away in a year, a year and a half, is very, very challenging for this organization. I would, I would encourage the council member to follow the lead of the, of the city manager and allow us two to three months to come back and give you a plan of where we would put these firefighters from North Central, in the current vacancies, in the vacancies we're accruing over the next six months to nine months, and show you the plan that, that we can put our firefighters in the relief pool, and then what we would do with the rest of those firefighters and what that cost is. And to muddy it up with, with this motion, I, I think the transparency has been real, and I think you've communicated this, your need here, but I would encourage you to not do this right now, and give us some time to come back and show you a plan.
Well, I appreciate that, Chief. It's been very muddy for me, too, by the way, trying to understand this whole thing. And I have some other councilmembers that wanna, wanna, I'm gonna take some, take a couple more minutes and think this through, and think out what I want the motion to do, but if, 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 I wanted to be very clear that regardless, in two or three months, I'm, I'm gonna have to have answers about all of these questions. I may not have them all today, but in a couple, three months, I'm very serious about having answers to this. And I hate that anybody, whether firefighters or police officers are nervous, it's not the intention, but I adopt a budget, and I need to understand what these line items mean, and, and, and I'm gonna get to the bottom of it. I'm a, I'm a very fair person, always been fair, but this is an muddy issue. I don't like the fact that it's muddy. I don't like the fact that I don't understand it, and I'm gonna understand it. And when I do, we're gonna, we're gonna take the, the right actions.
So there's no current motion? Okay. Well, and just, I, I just wanna make an announcement, just so that we know, because we're running up to the noon hour. I will say that if there are any additional motions, which there, there may be, we won't be voting on them until we come from lunch, but we can go ahead and continue. Councilmember Bretafeld and then Councilmember Olivier.
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate.
Sorry, sorry.
Oh.
Councilmember Chavez was, was first.
I've been very patiently waiting to speak. You know, I, I don't, I have a lot of respect for my colleagues. I've been in the building here close to ten years, and I've seen, you know, what these budget cycles look like. I can tell you that I was here during the Great Recession, when there were a lot of cuts. I saw police, fire dwindle down, I saw our Parks Department go from hundreds of employees to about maybe fifty. Lawns weren't getting mowed, but we have about a hundred and forty-nine million dollars in parks needs right now. We've got over a billion dollars in infrastructure needs across our city. And so I, I say that because I would much rather be having the conversation we're having now about investments and, and investing in our community than those conversations that I remember very vividly about cutbacks and furloughs and layoffs and reduction in services. And we are still recovering from a lot of those cutbacks that we went through. I remember my office was back there, I was staff, and I would see people that were laid off every single Friday, and that was tough to see. And so I, I say that because I hope my colleagues appreciate the process that went in into this conversation, and, and I think it's healthy to have these conversations about priorities and what we wanna do. But I really feel like we came up with a good balanced approach to making these strategic investments and making sure that we do beef up our reserves and ensure that another recession doesn't have the severe cuts, that we do invest in a senior citizen center, that we do invest in housing, that we do invest in infrastructure. And I will tell you that, you know, I represent parts of the city that are over a hundred years old. I see those needs every day. I see kids having to walk through mud when it rains, because they can't get to school without a sidewalk. And so the needs are there, and, and I wanna remind my colleagues that the mayor actually brought forward an initiative that would at least reduce a lot of the needs we're ha, we're, conversation we're having right now. And there wasn't a lot of interest from my colleagues, and maybe we'll get a chance to revisit that in the near future. But I wanna say that, you know, and I'll close it with, with this, that there's an old saying in budgeting that says, "Don't tell me what you value, show me your budget, and I'll tell you what you value." I think this budget's not perfect, but I think we have struck a balanced approach to it, and, and I hope my, my colleagues appreciate that, because I think the last thing we wanna do is get back to all those cutbacks that we had about eight, nine years ago. That was really hard to see, and so I just wanted to make sure that we put that out, out there for the public to know and understand. But I think we've got a good balanced budget here, and we'll always have a conversation, we'll agree to disagree on different priorities and investments, but I just want you to know that, that I respect you. I respect Councilmember Olivier and, and Bretafeld and, and Brandow. At the end of the day, it's whatever four council members decide to go with, and, you know, we'll see where it goes. Thank you.
Well, Council President, can I just intercede for one moment? Those were my exact comments, that this particular item, we're kind of far afield, but getting back to the three point four million, those were my exact thoughts, that's what we shared during our meeting, to figure out what can we do for the overall citizenry of, of Fresno. So as my colleague said, the reserve is, we don't wanna go through where your sewer is at risk, your water is at risk, like we did in the oh, oh-seven, oh-eight, oh-nine. So that's that part of it, and again, number one on our list, community slash senior center. And we went down with housing and parks and infrastructure and the city attorney's office to enforce the laws and ordinances that we have. So we try to do a really, a good balanced approach, and thank you for summarizing, Mr. Chavez, and I thank you, Member Bretafeld.
Councilmember Bretafeld and then Councilmember Olivier.
Yeah, and I wanted to be clear, I'm, I'm not attacking anyone, certainly not Councilmember Capriolo, I, I support the, the senior citizen center. But, you know, let's, let's recognize what the process was. We were having this dialogue week in, two weeks ago, then I went to a subcommittee, and the subcommittee came back and put forward this motion, which I was not a part of, and don't support. I made a motion when we were having our debate for the safety officer for the fire department. I supported Steve's motion to, to build the fire station, all public safety. We also had a motion for community service officers and dispatch officers as part of our budget process. That didn't come back as, as part of this subcommittee. So, again, it should be about public safety, it shouldn't be about taxing people. I mentioned the, the mayor's proposal. Clearly, clearly there's a need, but taxing people, taking more money from them is not the solution. Making the priorities with the budget and the monies we have is what we should be doing, not trying to get more money from them, but using the money and focusing it on public safety, which is what we all profess we wanna do. So I would like to make a competing motion. I would make a motion that we have the million dollars towards the community senior cen- center, and that the one point four million dollars goes to the police department, and that they can use that for dispatch officers, or, or dispatch or community service officers, or any other resources that they need to get, and one million dollars for the fire department. We talked about a safety officer and other needs, I know that's less than what it was, but one point four should go to the police department, one million should go to the fire department, and one million dollars for the community center in District Four.
May I jump in on that motion? So if, if you are going to recommend ongoing expenses for PD and fire, our recommendation would be that you look at carving out the two point five for about four hundred and eighty thousand a year for five years, and we, we estimate that would fund about seven to eight civilian positions.
You're gonna have to say the two hundred and fifty, where?
So, it, so there's the three point four that we're talking about, right?
Yes.
So you said one million for the community center?
Yes.
And then the remaining monies, if you are making a motion, that they go to ongoing positions?
Well, that will depend. I think, I, I would leave that up to Police Chief Dyer, where that greatest need is, same with Chief Donnis. Now, some of that may be one-time money, some of that may be personnel.
And if it's ongoing, our recommendation would be no more than four hundred and eighty thousand for the next five years, to, to basically be two point four million for five years, so we can make sure those ongoing expenses are covered, just to clarify.
I appreciate that, and that's a recommendation. Now, I mean, there will be other ways to look at funding ongoing resources, but I appreciate the input, City Manager. I would leave the one point four, see what the police chief comes back with, same with the one million dollars for the fire department. And that's my motion.
There is a motion, but there, there's no second. There's no second.
I'll second that for the purposes of discussion.
Okay. Councilmember Olivier.
Um, yes, City Attorney, in terms of the revenue expected to come into the city, beginning in, I don't know what fiscal year that would be, if the city starts to issue cannabis licenses in the, in January of nineteen, that would probably, and I don't know if Mary is here, or someone who knows about this, when would the city begin to realize tax revenue from the sale of licensed cannabis in the city of Fresno?
I, I believe if we start issuing licenses and they begin operating in January of nineteen, we would expect to see at least some of that revenue during FY nineteen.
FY nineteen, FY twenty, okay.
How much, I can't tell you.
Okay, so this is, this, this is the, this is my motion. You know, for the seniors that are still here, I got, I was a punching bag for, for these guys a little bit, all right? I don't think, Member Capriolo, I don't think, Member Capriolo, that this situation is an either-or situation anymore. I think it's a, it's a both-and.
That's what I suggested.
Yeah, it's a both-and, so I think that.
I already suggested that.
I think that what the seniors are, are talking about is not, we're here for the grand opening of a center four years from now, or five years from now. They want, they wanted the city to begin work on something now, because they, they, they've done the work, they got the sweat equity, they did the white paper, they did the, um, then the Parks Department did the business plan. Thanks, Dr. Bill. And so I don't think that the city of Fresno has to be, has to choose between those two worthy projects, the one that the seniors designed and the one that the council is going to deliver, hopefully sooner rather than later. The reason why I didn't make a motion is because the city doesn't have any money. You see us fighting over firefighting positions, and we're fighting over this, we're fighting with that, we're fighting and we're fighting, because there is no money. Yes, we have a billion-dollar budget, but it's, we're on a shoestring, we always have been, and we still are. And it's never been my thing to make budget motions, to spend money, but I'm gonna do it now. I'm gonna spend money that is going to come in, beginning in the spring or summer of twenty nineteen. I'm gonna spend it on our senior center. Member Chavez, graciously, a couple weeks ago, you were all here, made a motion to put a hundred thousand dollars in the budget to begin working on senior center. If it, if you're about to get a million bucks, maybe we can figure out a way to get this hundred thousand dollars to parks, so they can come up with some kind of interim facility, even if it's for two or three years, I think it would be worthwhile. So that being the case, I wanna make a motion that, that the city of Fresno put five hundred thousand dollars a year from the cannabis tax revenue into a senior center in the city of Fresno, which would give us an interim city, senior center, beginning sometime in twenty nineteen, so that's next year. So that is giving you an identified revenue stream. Voters still have to approve this tax in November, but the whole purpose of this tax was not to, just to strengthen public safety, but to strengthen communities. I wanna run the senior center on cannabis money, okay? I'm not gonna upset these council members by going after their pet projects and their pork projects. I'm gonna identify new money, and we're gonna spend it on our seniors. So that's my motion, Council President, that the, that the city begin to put five hundred thousand dollars off the top of the cannabis tax that is realized in twenty nineteen. And I suppose after I'm gone, it, it doesn't really matter anymore, but that's my motion, that we begin work on senior center immediately, and that's our funding source when it starts to come in.
So I think you're asking for the audience to support that ballot measure in November.
I'm asking you for a second.
Uh, and, and, and just to clarify, there is no cannabis tax revenue recognized in, in the current budget, so, so, so we would have to recognize the half a million dollars, and then we'd recognize the expense to go with it.
Okay, so can, that, is that the motion?
Yes.
Yes, that's the motion. Looking for a second.
I'll second you for purpose of discussion. We will be disposing of those motions when we all get back from lunch, but what I wanna do, I wanna give an opportunity to still the folks that are in the room that want to make their comments. One, I know there's a number of you guys that are still here to make comments on the senior center. If you guys wanna make comments that, one, either add to what has been already said, I welcome you guys to come on up.
Former trustee Dottie Smith has asked.
Excuse me?
Former trustee Dottie Smith has requested.
Okay, perfect. If you can come on up as a first speaker, Dottie? And if you can state your name and address, for the record, you will have two minutes.
Nine o'clock when I came, good afternoon, council people. After sitting here, listening, don't count yet, but because after sitting here, listening, I have quite a bit to say, and it may go over three minutes. But first of all, I wanted to talk about the senior cities, uh, center, because I think it's important, and I don't wanna ad lib or go over and over and over what has been said, but I do want to say in terms of public safety, and we talk about that and comparing that to the senior citizen, uh, center, we're talking apples and oranges. Now, as a senior now, I, for one, really want to make sure that the public is safe, being I am that senior, that I admire the police. And when we talk about, Gary, you talked about murders and those types of things, well, I've experienced that, and Chief Dyer was a spokesperson during that time a few years ago, when my niece was murdered in cold blood, and I saw where the bullet went through her head. So I'm saying, yes, I am interested in public service, but, you know, as we, uh, public safety, but as we talk about seniors, we talk about public safety, we talk about all those things, I have not heard anybody say anywhere about what's causing all of this havoc. I haven't heard anybody talk about a parent's center, because all of this mess is going, all of these things that are happening in our city, what we, we want to take a hand, we want to take care of it. What about these parents? What about these communities? What are we, I haven't seen, heard anybody say anything about that. And these young people, old people who are doing these things that are causing havoc, that we have to worry about public safety, what is the council thinking about to help that? What are we doing to bridge the gap with the schools, the communities, and our public to stop some of this stuff, so we don't have to be too worried about coming out of our homes? That's what, and as I listen to the, the, the plea for public safety, what are we doing? Adding more police, et cetera, et cetera, will not solve the problem. We need to be more community orientated, and we do need to think about the village. and we do need to think about the village. And I, you know, that's the educator in me, and I don't want to go on and on and on. But let's not compare apples and oranges. We, I'm here to talk about the senior citizen center. And I do believe that is, the time has come. And as when Clint introduced me, he introduced me as trustee Smith. That meant I served on the State Center Community College Board for 33 years, so I understand budget processes. But I want to live long enough to be able to enjoy the senior city. So I'm thinking in terms, there's so much more we can do besides talking, there's much more we can do besides the rhetoric. And when we talk about, we throw out to the public about public safety, et cetera, et cetera, we kind of get lost in the shuffle. So let's talk about the senior citizens center. And yes, I do understand, having been an educator for many, many years, the importance of the generations coming together. But I do, our whole purpose, having worked on that task force for many, many months, is to talk about the senior citizen center. So let's talk about that. Let's see how we can go about the business of getting that center, make it a reality, and talk about some of the other things that are also plaguing our city. Yes, and I keep going back to public safety, but it's not just the council, it's not just the senior citizen task force, it is a community effort. And I haven't heard anything about what are we doing to bring in the community to stop some of this havoc, these murders, these thieves, all these people who think they can get away with anything. How are we gonna solve that problem? So that's what we need to think about, council, as we talk about the budget. Money, a long, long time ago, some of you may know James Brown, money won't change it. It's about what we do as citizens that will change what's happening in our community. And yes, I'm number one for a senior citizen center. And I hope that in your conversations, that you make sure that somewhere or another, I want to live long enough to be able to enjoy that senior citizen center.
Thank you. So I have a couple other cards. If you guys just want to come up and add, but if you haven't already spoken, I know there's some folks that have already spoken, I'm sorry. But for those, I do have John Crawford, Ismael Gimeno, Carmen Mendoza. If you guys want to come up, are you guys still here? Okay, I have Dr. Dale? Bill, sorry, I couldn't read the writing. Yes. Okay, come on up. If you can state your name and address for the record, you will have two minutes.
Thank you so much for having me here. I'm Carmen Mendoza, 2639 East Young Drive. While I wear many hats in this community, I stand before you as the leaders in my community, the policymakers, to, as an animal advocate and taxpayer. I can't even tell you how much, how heavy the SPCA contract was weighs on my heart, especially after last week's meeting. Borrowing Councilmember Olivier's term of endearment, I too see the SPCA as a rogue organization who, under their queen, rules their kingdom, enclosed in a castle, complete with a moat and a big sign that reads "City Council, Keep Out." I review the contract and have come across many contract violations, which are too numerous for me to detail, given the time that I've been allotted, recognizing that nobody else can provide these services at this time. But I find the contract rollout to be quite disturbing, to be honest, and I want to voice that. I know that the city manages about 800 contracts at the moment, and most of those people have been given deliverables, they have been given requests for reports to be submitted on a timely basis. And this one particular organization, I requested from the city attorney's office all of the reports for augmented services, for their fiscal contract and complaint reports. And I was, I asked for the reports going way back. They were only allowed, they were only able to provide to me one year's worth of reports, and I had to double-check and say, you know, did my request by chance, you know, get somehow fumbled? And they mentioned that, no. In fact, they had verified with the SPCA themselves, and they had only submitted reports for the past year, which is a contract violation going back to 2014. So I know that, like I said, nobody else can provide the services at this time. But I do ask, and I plead with you, as the most influential people in the city, that with the contract renewal, the extra 213,000 that they have asked, if that's going to be given to them, that that set of funds come with a restriction in terms of contract oversight. And with this, I mean a clear explanation at a minimum of how these taxpayer funds are being used and for what services, and how much within these services. I don't want to see a budget that comes back with not only the funds that the city is contracting with the SPCA, adding whatever other donations they've been able to fundraise for the, for the things that they choose to fundraise for. But I want to know that we are treating the SPCA as a contract, just like the other 800. Because what if the other, the other 799 decide, hey, we're not gonna submit reports either? So I urge you, with any funds that are going to be, you know, given to this rogue organization, that you please have some sort of oversight.
Thank you, thank you, Carmen. Next, I have Donna Callahan, Mary Esther Correa, and then Kerwin Wong. Oh, Dr. Bill, sorry, you were next in line, but I called the next three after.
What can we say? I'm gonna treat you like my students. I want you to be change agents and go back and remember our presentation in November, in June, with our task force and the Parks Plan to have a center. You all know the history of Fresno. We've had no center for 49 years. We have more than 93,000 seniors with no place to call home. We would like to live and be able to participate. In our task force report, major component to that report was to protect Manchester seniors and Caesar Chavez seniors because of the adult school lack of support and not wishing to meet the needs of a senior population. You mentioned in the subcommittee that you had a commitment from Fresno Adult School. I find that fascinating, when we can get them to commit to even to come to our meetings to answer the questions of the seniors that go to Manchester every day. I challenge you to go to Manchester. I've been to Manchester, but oftentimes you can't get upstairs. It's the best-kept secret in town. You can't get there because there's no elevator, there's no escalator. And seniors use walkers, canes, wheelchairs. You need to go back and honor your commitment to us as citizens. We've been here, done that. The subcommittee didn't ask any of us seniors our input about a senior activity center. I'm not even sure they read the task force or the business plan because it didn't even mention anything that was covered in those plans. So my challenge to you, think big, just not the million dollars. Use Clint's motion to help fund the center. Even look at the mayor's motion for a tax if it were to pass. Give 10% of that money to the seniors that deserve a center.
Thank you. You're gonna support that initiative, Mr. Clint Olivier? Donna Callahan, and then Mary Esther Correa, and then Kerwin Wong.
Ladies and gentlemen, Donna Callahan, professor emeritus from Fresno Pacific University, 4757 North Harrison Avenue in Fresno, 93704. I'm coming kind of late to this project because I finally just got to retire at 72. But I have long been involved in the community and in planning and working with different groups to provide more community involvement, community safety. Someone earlier said, and I truly believe that, that if you're looking for the quality of a community, you look to its involvement in helping the people of the community. I did my doctoral research on food deserts in Fresno and how they impact elders. There's a whole new issue to be taken care of. I totally support police safety. I live two blocks from where the young man was shot in the head the other night, and it's devastating. But I also support the community being involved with its citizenry. We do need to look at why do we have the crime problems that we have. We need to have youth programs, we need to have senior citizen programs. And I want to remind you that senior citizens vote, and that's an important part. If we can involve them in their own process of solving this problem, we can find the money, we can work together. And I'd be most happy to work with the task force and the committee on solving this problem. I've heard some positive processes here, but I'd like to see more commitment to how are we going to get it done.
Thank you so much. Mary Correa, and then Kerwin Wong.
Mary Esther Correa, 3407 East Iowa. Born and raised here in Fresno, California. I'm a retired educator. I've dealt with a lot of teens. They need to be addressed. The, it's a shame that there is not a city, senior city center. It's a shame. Because not only we're out the door, but we have worked all our lives, and now it's time for us to enjoy some of our lives. Because we have worked very hard, we vote, we're upstanding citizens. And you cannot, excuse me, my voice, because my asthma is bad. But you have to remember that we vote you in to help us, your constituents, and our, and our people, and we're the ones that vote. We're the ones that are homeowners, we're the ones that are being fined, we're the ones that are being overtaxed. We need to have a senior citizen, at least before we go out the door, hopefully up there, not down there. But think about it. We deserve it. We deserve the senior city, and it's, it's, it's good for everybody. It's good for the grandparents, the parent, yourself coming up, because we're lucky that we're here. So we deserve it. And si se puede, yes you can. Stop fighting and stop not getting it done. You can get done. Yes, you can. You start a little bit and keep going and going and going, and it'll be done. It needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Kerwin Wong.
Hi, my name is Kerwin Wong. Do you want my address? 2346 East Hampton Way? I'm here to address, again, the issues I had with the city about my parking tickets and things, because my...
Oh, right now, I think you had put about the senior center, no?
No, I put about current issue.
Oh, okay. Sorry. We are doing only budget items. We're not dealing, I already called up unscheduled communication. If you want to set up some time to come back to address your issues, that would be the most appropriate time. But right now, we're dealing with budget.
Yeah, I was trying to get it on record because I had no other way of...
Yeah, unscheduled, I called unscheduled communication earlier, and so that's when usually you could come. Otherwise, you can, we can set up a special time with the clerk, and you will be put on the agenda for the next council meeting. So we can, we can do that.
I see.
So we're gonna go ahead and recess. If you have not made any comments related to the budget items, I will allow you an opportunity to come up, and you'll have two minutes to share. So if there's anyone else that hasn't spoken yet on any of the motions that were made or the budget, you have an opportunity right now. If you want to come, just... You'll have one minute, ma'am, because you're already...
That's fine. I understand, and I appreciate that. I have to always support law enforcement. I'm the proud mother of two officers, one for the state at the Fish and Game Department, and my son is a police officer in San Diego County. Don't ever take a penny from law enforcement to give to us. There has to be money in the budget for other things. That's all I wanted to say, because my son has had to buy equipment, safety equipment himself, over his time in duty. I don't want to see another officer that way. He's been in two shootouts, and he's been okay. Three more years, and he retires. So don't take money from something that would save an officer's life.
Thank you. Okay, so what we're gonna go ahead and do, we'll recess right now for lunch. We'll be back at 1:45. At that time, we'll dispose of the motions, and then we will, I believe we will have an update from the budget, and we'll continue with the rest of the agenda. Thank you. What we're gonna be doing, rather than going back to the budget, we did have the 10:00 AM hearing where the clerk had to go count votes, and I believe she is ready to report out. And then following that item, we will continue on with the budget discussions, or with the budget motions.
Uh huh, 10 o'clock item. So the results of the election, there was a total, total votes that could be cast was 185. The votes cast yes was 57 or 55.9%. The total votes cast no was 45 or 44.1%. Total votes cast was 102. The votes cast no equal 44.1% of the total vote cast, and therefore, a majority protest does not exist for this item.
Perfect. City Attorney, can you just remind us in terms of the process?
Right, so that means the council can vote to approve the item now.
Perfect. So is, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Councilmember Brandau?
To accept the results.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Brandau and a second by Councilmember Olivier. Any opposition? See none, that motion carries. So what I want to do to dispose, we have one other item aside from budget that was scheduled as a special meeting. I don't know if the staff is here, it was scheduled for 1:55. So we're gonna take that up.
Good afternoon, Council President, members of the council. I'm Scott Seem with Public Works. Thank you. The item before you that was moved to the special hearing is the Orange Avenue Pavement Overlay Construction Contract Award. This project is a one-mile pavement grind and overlay from California Avenue to Jensen Avenue, and will also include some ADA improvements along the route as required. The striping will provide two travel lanes, two-way left-turn lane, bike lanes, and on-street parking throughout the corridor. And the project will improve the deteriorated condition of the paving that currently exists in that street. We had four sealed bids that were received, and they were opened in a public opening on May 22 with the lowest responsible and responsive bidder being Dave Christian Construction with a bid of $1,141,217. Staff recommends that council award the contract to Dave Christian Construction. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be here to answer them.
Perfect. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? See none, Councilmember Chavez.
Motion to approve.
So Councilmember Chavez makes a motion, second by Councilmember Capriolio. Any opposition? See none, motion carries 7-0. Yes, so now we're going back to budget. Yes, so now we're going back to budget. Councilmember Baines.
Thank Council President. I have a motion I wanted to make. It's off of my earlier dialogue. So I'd like to make a motion regarding the fire department. We have three hundred and thirty-four positions that are being proposed to be authorized. As all my colleagues heard from my earlier discussion, the fire department's not going to fill all three hundred and thirty-four positions. However, I do know that currently in this year's plan, there is a plan for a drill school. I do understand that in a drill school, that usually there will be twelve firefighters that are hired. So what I'd like to do is make the motion that we authorize the three hundred and twenty-three positions for, fund the three, up to three hundred and twenty-three positions for the fire department this year. And for the additional eleven positions that would create the balance of the three thirty-four, that we withdraw the funding from those positions and move those, move that into their overtime budget accurately reflect where the money, where I believe the money's going to be spent. But at the same time, I'm not taking away the positions, but I am defunding those positions at such a time as we will revisit if we need to bring those positions back for North Central. If the firefighters actually have to come back to Fresno, City of Fresno this fiscal year. Now, I do realize, talking to the city manager, that this could impact the firefighter MOU. If in fact it does, I'll ask that staff bring that back to us for further consideration. But that's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so Councilmember Baines made a motion and that was second by Councilmember Brando. Any other motions? Okay, so what I'm gonna go ahead and do, I'm gonna go back to the motions that were made earlier today. We'll just do what we did previously. We'll go in the order that they were received. And we'll dispose of-
Just regarding the motion by Councilmember Baines, I just wanted to ask Chief Donis.
Well, we're gonna take each motion-
Okay, you want to wait till then?
Yeah, we'll do that. Yeah, great. So we'll go ahead and take the first motion. The motion was presented by Councilmember Paul Capriolio and seconded by Councilmember Chavez. And that motion included, it was pretty long, but I believe everyone got the copy of it. And it was, I believe, amended to ensure that the infrastructure dollars are divided up by the districts. We'll go ahead and do an electronic vote.
Which one are we doing again?
The initial motion made by Councilmember Capriolio. It's kind of long, otherwise I would have read it all. But it disposed of the three point four and the nine point nine would be put into the reserve.
It's the one you support.
I got it.
So we can go ahead and vote electronically? Great, so the motion carries five-two.
Thank you all very much for your support.
Next, we have a motion made by Councilmember Gary Brettafield. He had motion to use one million dollars for the senior center, one point four for the police department, and one million for the fire department. And these are the same dollars that actually were just voted on, but procedurally, we still have to take it up as a vote.
Can we vote for both? I just have a point of order in reference to the senior center. If we could call it the District Four Community slash Senior Center for the purposes of our discussion, because because we have another senior center motion. They're two different things, just for the point of clarification.
That would be fine. And I think if the original motion that you voted on, that's what it was stated as. Perfect. So we'll go ahead and vote electronically. So a motion fails. Four-two, one abstention. Next motion is the motion to use the marijuana tax money to fund five hundred thousand each year toward the senior center.
If I might, Council President? Council and staff, what I'm presenting to you is the most creative motion of the day. Definitely hoping to gain your support for this. And I had a discussion offline with Mr. Sloan and also Ms. Sumter about how this could be done. And I guess just to kind of recap, Doug, if you can kind of take us through the process on this. The idea behind it is not to fund in perpetuity what we'll call the interim senior center. But it's just, it's just a way that we can bridge the gap from this year, I think I can come up with the money this year to get started. And also to, when money is realized from that revenue, that this would lock up five hundred thousand dollars for that. We don't have to change the ballot language, is that correct?
Yes, first of all, I understand this is not intended to change the ballot language. And ninety percent of the revenue that would be received if approved is general fund revenue. So of that general fund revenue, it's intended that five hundred thousand of that, if and when received, would be allocated towards the senior center.
The interim senior center, okay.
Yes, and you can only budget for one year at a time.
Right, so this wouldn't be in perpetuity. This is just, so it will come back to you. I will be gone, but hopefully, we can have something going and we can deliver on the promises that we've made to our seniors. The other question, and I mean, until something else comes along, I wanted, of course, to, I think it's important to note that there's a project being constructed at Blackstone and McKinley in District One that Councilmember Soria fought for. Were there, what it? It's two thousand square feet. It could be maybe senior, you know, three recliners or something in that small space. But I mean, I don't want to look a gift horse in the mouth. So I think that that's a possibility on the horizon as well. The one in District Four, that one is, at this point, being aggressively pursued, but is still at this point open-ended. And so it wouldn't be fair to give a date right now. It wouldn't be fair to Councilmember Capriolio or staff or to our seniors. So this would bridge the gap and begin the work on the interim senior center, senior lounge, the one that the task force worked on so diligently. And also, it's the same one that our Parks Department provided a business plan for. So gentlemen, here we go. I hope to get your vote. I think it's the right thing to do. I think it's the only motion that's come forward that actually identifies a new revenue stream to make this happen. And so that's why I'm not asking for you, council colleagues, to go into your infrastructure accounts. I'm not asking for you to give up a pet project. Just asking for your vote on this. Let's get started on this. I think there's gonna be a lot of people in our community that are really gonna be very appreciative of what this body's about to do. So with that, I thank you all.
Great, so is, did the motion at all, the word change, the verbiage change? Do you want to repeat that, just?
Do we have to, as part of this motion? I mean, Jana, I could defer to you and to Doug.
I think we should probably take out the each year. Agree.
And does part of this motion have to be to realize that revenue at this point?
Yeah, I would suggest that we place the appropriations in contingency until such time as that revenue actually appears.
Okay. That, is that good for a motion?
Would that make our budget, would it?
It'd be imbalanced.
A balanced budget?
Yes, it would, because we would preliminarily recognize that the revenue might come in, it's estimated revenue. And then there would be money down, appropriations down in contingency. And if that money did come in, we would come back to the council then to move it so that it could actually be spent.
Perfect. Just wanted to clarify because I am your second to your motion.
Thank you.
So, okay.
Appreciate you very much, thank you.
So the motion is to use the marijuana tax money, if it passes, right, to fund five hundred thousand toward the senior center.
The first year for the interim senior center.
For the interim.
And that gets this organization through twenty twenty with the senior center. And I have, the work has been done. The business plan is written, I think with a few tweaks. But I think that this is exactly what Parvin and Sean are chomping at the bit to do, is to make something really worthwhile for members of the community. And like I said, it's interim. I won't be here. And when that thing goes up in District Four, maybe it's fantastic, state-of-the-art, shut this one down, move the operations over there. I think it's a great creative way to really bridge the gap and deliver for our seniors. So thank you for your consideration, council.
Perfect. Councilmember Brettafield.
And I appreciate, you know, your efforts at the senior citizens center. I admire it. I just, I'm not gonna support this only because I believe this money's supposed to be going, if it is approved, for police, law enforcement. I mean, that's what I think we were talking about. So I just won't support it for that. But I appreciate your efforts.
Great, so we'll go ahead and take a vote electronically. So there's a motion and a second. Motion carries five-two.
Thank you, council.
Then we have one remaining motion. That motion was made by Councilmember Baines and seconded by Councilmember Brando. I believe Councilmember Brettafield had some questions.
Before we start, Councilmember, I wanted to explain it again. Even Council President asked me for an explanation. So, and I'll do my best to be succinct. Essentially, the recommend, the proposed budget is authorizing three hundred and thirty-four positions for firefighters. As we all learned, the fire department doesn't necessarily intend to hire three hundred and thirty-four firefighters. What I do believe is fair is that they probably will hire at least twelve. Because there's a drill school contained, and I believe that money is contained in this year's budget, Chief. Am I right about that? So normally, a drill school will carry twelve new hires, from my understanding. So right now, if you take, they have three hundred and eleven firefighters right now. I'm gonna increase that plus twelve to make sure that we can cover a drill school. Because I feel comfortable that they'll hire twelve. There are not two drill schools planned for this year, right, Chief? So we'll probably, they probably will not do another drill school this year. We don't have that plan and it's not budgeted for. So we're gonna go to three hundred and twenty-three authorized positions. The remaining positions, which are eleven. So there's a net of eleven. I'm going to defund the money from those authorized positions, move it to their overtime budget, which is where I believe the money is going to be spent anyway. So I'm attempting to align the budget with the actual, of what I actually believe they're gonna spend the money on. I'm not taking away the positions. I'm taking the money from those positions and moving them into the overtime budget, which is what I think is gonna be spent. However, there are a couple of caveats that I put in here. In the event that our North Central firefighters return to Fresno this year, we leave the ability open to move the money back and fund those positions again this year. And anything else that, any other positions we would need to do. The other caveat is if in fact there are some challenges with the MOU staff would have to come back and let us know what those challenges are. So I try to be succinct as possible. It sounds complicated, I'm sorry about that. It's a complicated issue.
Chief, and just any thoughts on the motion and the impact? And do you have any difficulty with this motion if the council moves forward with this?
I think I stated my position on this. I would prefer, I respect the council member's position. I would prefer that we, you know, work on this for two or three months and bring it back to the council, who can make an adjustment if they see fit at that time. But there's a lot of things playing out with the North Central agreement. I guess the concern would be even beyond just this year, not having those positions available to bring them back easier, easy, easier, gives us pause and concern.
Okay, and then just finally, City Manager, is that the position you share?
So that's how I started this whole conversation this morning too. You know, our recommendation would be to leave everything as is. We come back in sixty to ninety days. I do really respect working with Councilmember Baines and working through this issue. But at this point, it's the will of the council. But we stated our recommendation as well. It would be nice to make sure that there's assurance to the North Central Fire District firefighters. No, these positions are here and ready for you whenever you, we're gonna bring you home. So.
Okay. And that's not, you want to make this motion now rather than wait the sixty, ninety days?
Yeah, I actually think the budget should reflect where we are right now. I mean, I totally understand what City Manager and Chief are saying. I think that this body would happily correct or make accommodations for our North Central firefighters should that eventuality happen. I don't think that there's gonna be a single council member that would not authorize money to bring our firefighters home should that happen this year. So I understand the concern from that standpoint. But from a reality standpoint, I think I have an idea of what we would do if that happened.
So just had a quick question, Councilmember Baines. And you're right, it is a little bit confusing. And just wondering if you're agreeable to a small amendment that we do, what you describe, as long as it does not affect the MOU or lead to layoffs of firefighters? Would you be agreeable to that?
Well, yeah, I don't know how this could lead to layoffs. I mean, is there any? This is simply shit. And just to be clear, what this is, all this is really doing is moving money into their overtime budget. It's not like taking money from them. This is putting the overages, the pars that would be left open, that money does not go from the fire department. It moves to the overtime budget. That's really all it, I just want to be clear about what it's really, it says a lot, but that's really all it's doing is kind of squaring the, what we know is gonna be, they're gonna need more money in overtime. This budget will reflect more money in overtime, essentially.
Just so I can add one piece. The concern is there are more firefighters coming back from North Central than we have FTEs, vacant FTEs. And so moving what we have now into some overtime situation and North Central does come back, we still need more FTEs than we currently have to absorb them all.
How many more?
There's thirty-nine positions in North Central. There's twenty-three vacant FTEs.
That's a concern that I have, the flexibility, removing that flexibility, Councilmember Baines. Can you come up, Dean, just a quick question on this, on just how this would affect the MOU? If you could just kind of give a quick overview on that?
With the overview, excuse me, with the MOU, we have a constant staffing policy that's tied to the MOUs. It's kind of referenced throughout there. It also has a range of, it's kind of spelled out in vacancies and relief. And currently, we're pretty close to zero. So we're kind of right in the middle. With the vacancies, if we were to fill all those, it would take us to the top of the relief. And they would fit. But with North Central, with those thirty-nine employees in North Central, if we have to absorb those with our current numbers, they don't fit even within the relief. So that's been a concern. So it's gonna take some attrition to get down to that number. I think what would make me feel better is, and I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Baines, so as far as the transparency about, here's the positions, here's the overtime, I understand all that. But I think where the members are gonna be concerned is by lowering the numbers down to the three-eleven plus twelve for the drill school is when, if and when that, well, they voted to separate. So when that happens, where are those other members going? The thirty-nine that are out there? If we're somewhere in the low three hundreds, they obviously don't fit if we have positions at three-twenty-something. So I think that's the concern for the membership. They don't fit currently. And so if there was something that you could add to the motion to protect those members and that the council would increase the positions back up.
If I didn't state it clearly, the intent of the motion was to, was just what you just described. So, and City Manager, did I miss a part? Did I miss part of that? Because I know, I did talk to City Manager and the Fire Chief about crafting the motion beforehand so that what you just described would not happen. I think that my motion reflects that, does it not?
I would agree, but I also think that we still need to come back in sixty to ninety days.
I am not relinquishing that at all, yes.
Exactly, so just, I think that will also help clear things up.
Sure, but to your point, yeah, the motion does offer that protection as you described. Because I understand that that's a, that would be a real and present concern. It would be one for me too. So I added a couple of caveats in there, Councilmember Chavez.
You guys refresh me on the caveats.
Yeah, so that if in fact the- Yeah, so that if, in fact, the, the, um, north, that, if for some reason, North Central firefighters come back this fiscal year, which, there's some debate over that. It could happen, it may not. I know, I know that that's still up in air. We'll have a clearer answer with that in a couple of months, that those positions will automatically be refunded for those, for those firefighters that came home.
For just the ones that are being moved now?
Well, you guys would have.
Including the ones that are maybe over that number?
Well, see, here's the issue. We don't know how many you would need. You're going to have to come back and tell us how many you need. I can't go over the 334, but what my motion does is, is allow the 330, you know, bring it back to 334. Whatever you need above that, you'll have to tell us what that is. We won't know that number.
Yeah, it'll take a little bit of time.
Exactly. So, ex, so what my motion does is it, that's why it doesn't remove any posi, it doesn't remove any positions. It just moves the money of the remaining positions into your overtime budget, but it allows for it to be able to come back should those firefighters come back from North Central. And that's all in the effort of transparency, like the Chief said. It's just, we think that you're going to spend the, the, uh, money in overtime, so we just want it reflected there, because we think that's probably what's going to happen. And when the firefighters come back, we'll move it back.
Okay. And we would be happy to work, we would be happy to work with the Chief, the City, the Council on trying to figure that, those numbers out and helping out.
Okay.
Thanks.
Councilmember Baines, would you guys be opposed to adding in, in your motion that we figure out how to absorb all the positions? I know that we only have up to 334, but I, in the event that we do have to deal with it in this fiscal year?
You know, I'll be honest with you, I, I don't, so that was kind of the, the reason I gave the direction to staff this morning to, and the City Manager and I talked about them coming back in 60 to 90 days, so that they can actually tell us the answer to that question. So, part of my dialogue with them this morning includes coming back to have that very issue resolved as much as we can in 90 days. We should have a clearer picture about North Central, when we think, uh, they may actually come back to the City of Fresno. But I don't think that they know today, uh, which is kind of why I kept a couple of caveats in the motion to hold those positions. But we probably will have to increase.
Well, and, and that's, and that's my point. I think that, I know that there's some uncertainties, but in terms of policy, right? If we believe that, you know, if this happens, I would want to state now for the record that I would like all those positions absorbed and.
The motion does include that. It'll, it allows for that to happen.
No, you allow it up to 334.
Well.
And I'm sa, and I'm saying, because I don't think
So, with my motion.
334 may not.
So, the reason why I can't do that, Councilmembers, because I don't know how many, I don't know the number to increase, increase the, the parts to. That was what I was asking this morning, if you, if you recall. What will we need to increase it to? We don't have that number right now. So, I could make up a number and just say, increase it to whatever.
We wouldn't make up the number. I think the policy would be that we would absorb the existing positions in North Central and add them to beyond the 334 that are authorized today. That's kind of my recommendation, but.
Point of order, could I just ask a question to kind of cut? I, I, I need help understanding. And, um, so my first question is, is it possible to bring this back? Because I'm, I'm having a hard time following everything, and I want to be helpful to our Fire Department. I want to be helpful to the maker of the motion as much as I possibly can. Is it possible that this could come back as an agendized item at a regular meeting? Because this is something, to me, would love a staff report, would love to understand better. And, and it's, it's kind of, I think it's probably safe to say it's most complicated of the budget motions, and I want to understand it so that I can.
So.
I mean, could, I mean, is it possible it could come back?
Councilmember, with four votes, anything is possible, sometimes five. But, um, um, what, so I, I'm happy to, to think that through, but my motion is going to stand today. Because, and listen, it may fail, but it's important for me that the, the, the budget that we adopt reflects that we think, what we think may happen in the Fire Department today. I don't know what's going to happen in a few months in North Central. They don't know how many positions we need to ask for. I'm happy to, I mean, I could, I could do that, Councilmember, uh, Council President, rather, as far as just adding, but I wouldn't know the number. We wouldn't know the budget implications. Uh, we wouldn't have any of that information if I worded the motion that way. What the City Manager was asking was to allow them to come back and actually give us that number, so we can then incre, we'll have a basis to increase the number of authorized positions, do the appropriate budget documents, you know, that, that go with it. I thought that was a, a better option, but I'm happy to do it. But we would just, we wouldn't know what that number would be. We wouldn't know what the budget implications are until they've done that work. So, what this was trying to do today was simply just reflect what we know today. What we have a pretty good idea of is what they're going to do, who they're going to hire. We think that they're probably going to spend the additional money on overtime, move that money into their overtime budget, allow the staff to come back and give us a fuller report on how many positions we think we need to increase that number to, how much it would actually cost, how it fits into their relief pool and every, all the other metrics. So, I was wanting to allow the staff the time to do that. That was kind of why.
And, and I'll be fine with that. I just wanted to make sure, and, you know, for the record, that in the event that, that that does happen, I would really want us to work hard to make sure that we don't only use up to the 33, 334 positions, but all the folks that are part of the North Central are brought back.
And I'm glad you said that, because I told, I told the staff that I don't imagine any Councilmember not increasing the number to whatever we needed to be.
And that's, I just wanted to make sure, because I know there's folks here, um, from Local 753, that I want that message to be heard and that your members are assured that there is, at least on my end, support to, to make sure that that does happen if, in the event that we, we face that.
And might as well, Council President. Thank you for making that.
Councilmember Brenda.
Yeah, for me, real quick, Councilman Baines is, is on an issue that's near and dear to my heart, and it's very simple. It's about transparency in government, and our budget in the Fire Department is not being transparent. So, I, I agree with all of the concerns about North Central, and I'll gladly receive those firefighters back into the City of Fresno. But currently, we have a, we're not being very transparent with the people of the City of Fresno when it comes to our Fire Department. And so, I'll support his efforts and his motion to kind of clear up that indiscretion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Libby. You're punched up again?
Hmm, I'm, I don't need to speak again.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, there is a motion by Councilmember Baines and second by Councilmember Brenda. We'll go ahead and take an electronic vote. So, motion carries four-three. And those are all the motions that were made. The last, the next thing that we have, I believe, Henry, we're going to go to, through all the various resolutions as part of the entire budget.
That's correct.
And you had a couple of clarifications that you wanted to put into the record?
Yes. For the record, a annual appropriation resolution and a position authorization resolution was hand-delivered to each Councilmember. Those documents reflect the motions that were approved as of June 28th. So, that would be the most current. And again, that's for the record.
Great. Okay, so what we're going to go ahead and do, we will, um, there are four, uh, no, not four, six, six parts to the budget. We'll go ahead and take them as a whole. We can do an electronic vote.
Council President, if, if, if we could indicate that these are being voted on as amended?
Oh, yes.
Because you did take actions today.
Yes, so the motions that were taken today and then previously, um, are the amendments to the various documents that we have before us outline in the agenda, which is item one through six. So, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
A final budget vote?
Yes.
That we're about to take right now? So, you're including the motions that passed today to the, to the budget, to, to the overall budget motion? So, this, what you're preparing to take from us is the final, final vote?
Yeah, and so there was various motions that passed in the last couple meetings, including the one today. And so, now the entire budget includes those motions.
Okay. So, we don't, so we're just going to take one vote?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. And then, do we have opportunity, uh, from Council to make our final comments on the entire budget?
Yes.
Okay.
You have the opportunity now. Do I have to go out to the public on the final, or?
No, we've already.
We've already did, right? Perfect. Okay, so, Councilmember Brenda, did you want to?
Uh, you know, I'm going to let some of my colleagues speak first, I think.
So, there, so there's, there's a motion made by myself and, um, second by Councilmember Capriolio. There is no one else punched up? Yeah?
Are you guys, are you guys good?
No, if you, yeah, go ahead.
Madam President, members of the Council, I apologize. I don't know the protocol. I'm new at this. Hopefully, I've built some capital with you in, in the weeks that we've been working together. One of the things I've heard loud and clear from many of you is you're not accountants. That's why you have an analyst to review the information and, and help break things down and help you understand what's going on. And I, I just want to make sure we're clear on what the appropriation resolution is really, the position it's, it's really bringing the city to. I'd like to point you to page A79 of the budget. And for the record, it would be nice if in the future this was actually treated as a fold-out document, because it covers so many years. This is actually the city's, the back half of this page is your five-year budget. As, as you can see, when you flip the page, you lose all of the detail, so there's just numbers there with no context. And so, what I'd like to share with you is, with the appropriation resolution as adopted, if you, if you look at the top of page A79, the very top number is 9,454,000. That is a carryforward reserve on which this budget is balanced. There's $7.1 million that's being drawn from that reserve to balance these numbers before any changes were made. With the changes that were made based on Council motion, another million dollars was drawn from that reserve. So, the number at the bottom, the first, of the first column in the 2019 fiscal period, currently, it's 2,311,000. That number falls to about half that value with the changes proposed in the appropriation resolution. And going forward, these negative numbers become larger. And much of the discussion that's been directed through the course of this budget hearing has been ongoing initiatives need to have support in the future. And what we have is a number of ongoing initiatives for which the five-year forecast shows no support. So, I just want to point that out to, to, to bring to your attention the fact that you're setting yourselves up in the future for the potential to have difficulty balancing your budget should expectations fall short. And already, in your five-year financial plan, expectations are such that there are going to be adjustments needed to the budget to make the numbers work. That's all I have, Madam President.
I have a question for you.
Thank you. Councilmember Libby?
So, you've been sitting there through this whole thing. How come you didn't say anything?
Well, it wasn't until today.
Now, all of a sudden, the second before we vote, you never said, hey, Council, wait a minute, you guys are spending, now, all of a sudden, you, you're going to stand up and, and.
Member Olivier, it wasn't until just before this meeting reconvened after lunch that I saw the appropriation resolution and realized that there were no offsets to the proposed new initiatives.
So, it's the new additions? It's the motions today that you're claiming are putting this organization out of balance for the future?
Well, if you look at the five-year plan, you're out of balance. This makes it worse. But it was my understanding, it was Council's direction, that as these new initiatives were being proposed, that there would be adjustments made elsewhere in the budget to accommodate them, so the numbers did not grow further out of line. I realized again after lunch that that is not the case.
Good job.
Councilmember Brettafield, are you punched up?
Well, I just, do you have anything to say about this, Jane?
I would, um, with all due respect to Mr. Padilla, um, the actions that you have taken, um, for the most part, have been one-time expenditures, and he is correct in that it will have an impact on the five-year. There are many things that will have an impact on the five-year. And that, for the exception of FY19, which is the year you are dealing with currently, all the other numbers in that, in that, um, document are estimates, and they will change. And that is why we come back to you each year with a refreshed set of numbers that are closer in estimates to what we believe will happen. And if something should happen, then we will come back to you with adjustments that need to be made. But for right now, what you are voting on is one year's worth of appropriations. And should their circumstances change, then we will return to you with those changed circumstances and a plan of action to address those.
Are you done with your comments, Councilmember Brettafield? Yes. Councilmember Brenda.
All right. Thanks, Wayne. Appreciate that, your opinion. It's going to be really tough to digest these last few minutes, but it doesn't bother me, because I'm not going to vote yes on the budget. But I was going to ask, Wilma. Wilma, when my motion that got adopted into the budget that added 150,000 per Council District Four infrastructure funding, uh, and, and I gave you guys the leeway to identify that funding, I don't want to cross over Mr. Wayne here. So, could you please identify how we, uh, what, how you came up with that funding?
It was, um, it was determined that the best course was that we would, um, identify part of the funding from UGM Parks. There is this, there's a portion of it, uh, the majority, or actually, the, the minority of it is going to be coming from the UGM Parks Fund, which has sufficient funds to, to cover that expenditure. And then, the remainder would be from the General Fund, um, and that we will monitor the General Fund during the year to ensure that there are sufficient funds for that expenditure. Thank you. I believe the proposed funding split was, uh, of the 1,050, there was 630 coming from the General Fund and 420 coming from the UGM Parks Impact Fee Fund.
630 coming from the General Fund?
630 coming from the General Fund, 420 coming from UGM Parks Impact Fees.
Tell me a bit, a little bit about the UGM Parks Impact Fees, Jane. How much is in that? How much is available inside that?
I don't have that number in front of me at, at the, at the current moment, but there are sufficient funds, I have been told. And I understand that there are sufficient funds in order to support this expenditure next year, as there were to support the expenditure last year.
Yeah, Henry, do we have that number?
I, I don't have it in front of me. But there was enough to cover the 420. In order, and I say to cover, to keep that, that fund in balance.
Okay, so, but there was not enough to cover the whole $1,050,000?
Again, I'd have to go back and just ver, verify that.
It seems like today should be a day that we have all the numbers in front of us, but, so essentially, it's, what's that?
Want a, a recess for a few minutes to give them
Well, I don't even know if it would be. Because, you know, what if that UGM Fund contains more money that we don't have to use General Fund money? Does that, does that interest anybody? I don't know.
And it's all parks, just so that you know?
And, and it was never my intention to take away from something. It was my intention to give us the ability to direct quickly to different problems we have in our parks, right? So, I have no problem of it being parks money
Okay.
allocated under parks, but give us the ability to direct like we did last year within our individual parks in our districts, so.
Well, I'm open to recess for a few minutes if that would give them the opportunity to get those accounts.
I was able to, to speak to Henry, and according to Henry, and, and I understand this, that, um, the Parks UGM, Parks Impact Fee Fund has sufficient funding to bear the entire 1,050 next year. as a one-time expense.
So I would like to tell my colleagues, then, that what the impact of that would really be is that when you go to spend this money, it wouldn't be able to be... My opinion, it would not be able to fix a pothole or to clear an alleyway, but it would be able to do something in the parks in your district. So if it's more important for your needs to fix potholes and clear an alleyway, then we need to include the general fund portion into it. So I'm very open to that discussion. We would still have $50,000 to do that kind of stuff, but we'd have to spend the other $150,000 in the parks. Is that correct, Wilma?
Yes, that's my understanding, within the limitations of the Parks Impact Fee Fund. Yes, you would have to spend it on certain items within the parks.
Well, I need to hear from what my colleagues would like to spend discretionary dollars on. Again, these are, Council President, these are in all-inother categories, but my goal is to allow us to conquer problems that we have in our districts quickly. So do you feel like, take it all from the parks? And then that would limit us to parks? Or do you want to fix other problems and then we need to include a portion of general fund?
In my perspective, I'd like to keep the flexibility because if you recognize from our previous motions, we have included a significant amount of money for the issues that we have to address with parks.
Yeah.
So, and I think that a lot of the other smaller issues that we face are, you know, a couple broken sidewalks, pothole stuff that we want to also augment to, at least in my perspective.
Okay. When I... on this particular issue, and I'm gonna be fine with that going forward, so thank you for identifying that for me, Jane. So we'll stick with the formula that Jane has come up for us for how to fund that infrastructure funding. When I initially asked this question, I was interested in the $780,000 that was funding the maintenance of Fulton Street. And there are pots of money in there. And I had anticipated, and I had conversations with the city manager, had anticipated that they would roll back some of the money from the Fulton Street project to allow... to get us to these numbers here. But it doesn't sound like that part was included, so Fulton Street will still have $780,000 dedicated to its maintenance.
You know, and I want to address that because you gave staff the discretion to come back to you with recommendations. And so we looked at it, we looked at it long and hard. And I want to make sure you know that if we don't... And I have Randall Morrison here ready to speak to this if we need to. But our Tiger Grant Agreement for Fulton required us to enter into a five-year annual maintenance plan and effort. We are going to be dealing with the FHWA to monitor that plan. If we do anything subpar for maintenance of Fulton, we may be required to pay back the Tiger Grant. And that's gonna be general fund to do that. So I did not want to put council in that situation. So we recommended keeping Fulton funded in its entirety.
And I got that. And it would probably be helpful if we knew what the terms and conditions were of that requirement and then council can make the adjustments. And Wilma, you know, I wish you hadn't...
Whenever we accepted the Tiger Grant, those terms were brought in front of council. And we're happy, I'm happy to make sure you see that again.
We can do that. But, so then, I wish you hadn't have said that, Wilma, because then that forces me to say what I'm gonna say, which is whenever council has a pathway, what we really hear down from that end of the dais is that a fear tactic. We heard it under Councilman Baines' motion, and we hear it all the time. It's a fear tactic. You're stopping us from investigating $780,000 on Fulton Street with a fear motive. And...
I'm... it's not...
And this is one of the reasons I'm not gonna actually vote yes on today's budget. And it's because I just don't agree with some of the way we've come up with our numbers today. It's not quite as fiscally responsible, doesn't meet that marker for my own personal self. And I'm making my final comments, I don't have to go back to Fulton Street. Other than, I was a part of voting for Fulton Street, and Councilman Baines knows that. I've been very supportive of him. But we've got a lot of streets falling apart across town, and that even includes North Fresno. And I think the voters and the citizens and the people that live in North Fresno, you know, they pay attention to this stuff. And so I was, you know, I would have been almost accepted, Wilma, had I heard that you were gonna say, "Councilman Brandow, we heard your concerns, we're gonna cut back a third of that money and use it somewhere else." But to keep it all in there, that is just one of the reasons I'm not gonna support the budget today. And so, Council President, that's... I'm done.
Thank you. Councilmember Brettafield?
Yeah, I'm also not gonna support the budget. And I'm not gonna support the budget for the very reason we talked about before lunch. The budgets are about priorities. It's clear that we have tremendous need with the police department and the fire department. I made a motion to give 1.4 million to the police. We have 911 dispatchers that aren't able to answer phones. And 1.4 million certainly would have addressed that issue. I made a motion to support giving the fire department $1 million. That was turned down as well. So rather than support public safety, we're supporting housing funds and infrastructure funds. And I can't support that, so I'm gonna vote no.
Councilmember Olivier?
Thank you. The... oh, forget it. You know, I... Councilmember Brandow, I agree with you. I think that, and I've said it from up here before, that I think from time to time, in a government where there's a separation of powers, the executive branch wants to lean on a legislative branch to accomplish some kind of political agenda, whether it's, you know, you're in the Congress and it's a federal housing thing, or we're at the city and it's a skate park. I believe that the... that I believe that it's part of the the healthy tension that exists in a government that has an executive branch and a legislative branch. And, I mean, in this case, I don't feel like there's been a... I don't feel like there's been a scare tactic. But I do think that it's the nature of an executive branch in a government where there's a separation of powers, where they are able to move a legislature in the direction that they see as best. But in this case, I don't, I haven't felt that. I think that this is a budget that, you know, like any budget, there are things in it that I'm very much in favor of. And like any budget, there are things in it that I could really do without. But I think on the whole, I think that it's been a tough budget cycle. But I'm going to vote for this budget. That being said, I want to commend everyone up here that's participated, my council colleagues, council... all of you, the ones who are voting for it, the ones who are against it. I think you've all worked very hard. I think the staff has done a good job trying to get us the information that we've asked for and trying to help us get there. And so with that, I just think that, you know, it's been worse. When I first got here, it was worse. And I think that this is good, I think services are coming back to Fresno. And I think that people are trying to do a good job for the citizens out there. So with that, I'll be voting for it, encourage you all to do the same. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. There is no one else that is punched up? I will call for the vote shortly. I do just want to make some very brief comments. First, I want to thank the mayor, thank you to the administration for working with us when we did ask you guys throughout the last few weeks questions from the dais. You guys were very quickly in responding through memos, and so we appreciate your guys' response. I will say that I want to just thank both the mayor and the city manager for working with us in the subcommittee and getting through some of the last-minute details that we were able to come to consensus with. Again, I appreciate my colleagues for the robust discussion and debate that happened here. And I also very much appreciate the engagement of our community in showing up regularly to let us know what were your desires. And, you know, I want to appreciate you guys for the time that you guys took. And now I guess we'll be ready to vote. So, Councilmember Capriolo, you just punched up. Yes?
Can we vote now, please?
Yes.
If everyone's finished?
So the motion carries 5-2. So we have one other item on the agenda, is item 3A, and then we'll go to close session after that.
Good afternoon, council. I know you've been waiting for this all day.
Save the best for last.
Yes, yes. I will try and keep it brief, but if you have questions, certainly ask. This workshop is really just to give you guys information on the restructure analysis we've done and the Title VI analysis that we did along with that. Before I get started, though, I did want to thank Gregory and his staff. They have put a lot of time into this analysis. And we're at many, many community meetings late in the evening trying to get our ridership and public's opinions and input on how to improve our services. What I was gonna cover are just some goals of the system changes that we have made and intend to make in addition to what we've already done. The FTA Title VI process and some policies that we will need to adopt as an organization. The public outreach process that we went through, local and national priorities, implemented changes that... those that we've made and those that we will make or intend to make. And then the financial impact. Our main goals are really just to give our customers what they want, our ridership. And it shouldn't be a secret that we've... Our ridership has declined over years, as many agencies have. We are trying to get our riders back. We are also in the process having to meet Title VI requirements that the FTA asks us to do. The... obviously, we want to improve our system efficiencies. The more efficiently we can run, the more service we can provide. We're focusing on productivity versus coverage, and I know we've had that discussion in the past, focusing higher frequencies on our core routes. We wanted to maintain cost neutrality, that was our target. We'll talk a little bit about that in future slides, but we did not maintain cost neutrality. However, we feel we can ensure financial stability of the system with the changes we're proposing. And then, of course, we want to ensure Title VI compliance. The next slide really talks about what FTA expects of us. They have three threshold measures. They want us to determine what the actual percentages are. Two are dependent on the... the second two are dependent on the first one. Anytime we make a service change, they want to know if it's what's considered a major service change. If it exceeds that threshold, then we would need to measure whether we have a disparate impact on minority populations or disproportionate burden on low-income populations. So we will be coming back to council with recommendations of the percentage shown on this slide. 25% change would trigger the analysis. And then if we had disparate impact or disproportionate burden over 20%, then we would have to make adjustments to our implementation to get it to where we're not affecting minorities or low-income populations. The Title VI analysis was a very mechanical, mathematical thing. We looked at census tract data around the routes that were affected and then determined those impacts. The other part, a large part of this process we went through was public engagement. And as you can see up here, we did quite a bit. That's the efforts that Greg and his staff made with the community as well as our riders and drivers. We had eight public workshops. We also had a large amount of bus riders surveyed. Our net was about 2,500 respondents on the survey. And then we did several stakeholder meetings and so on. So very robust public outreach, in my opinion. And I think the Title VI restructuring analysis report that our consultant put together reflects that. That is available online now, and I believe you guys received a copy of that via TRA memo. Here is what the results we saw, or what was... what we ended up with once the analysis was done. Productivity was most important to our drivers, or our riders, I'm sorry. The number one up there shows 23% wanted to see more late-night service. That's an important thing, but if you look at the next three, they all relate to frequency of service, how often the bus comes. And so realistically, our drivers, 42% of our riders... I keep saying drivers. They may agree too. 42% of our riders were interested in increased frequencies. That was our biggest priority from our ridership. Coverage was way down at 11%. So it is, it does seem to be validating what we've been doing with increased frequencies on our core routes. It also reflects very closely to national trends. Our national surveys have been done and are very similar to Fresno. With an exception, you see on the national trends, lower fare cost was a priority, number three. Our fare is fairly low relative to other agencies. And we did do a pilot where we reduced the fare by 25 cents, and we didn't really see an increase in ridership of any significance. So that was the real major difference, I think, between national studies and ours. Next, here are the changes that we've already implemented over the last couple of years. We increased frequency on Shaw and Cedar, the Fax-15 effort, which did show, did help our ridership gain, you know, we gained ridership. As we rehabbed the MTC, I guess we're still doing that, we eliminated routes going into the MTC that went in there unnecessarily. They were just going in there because that's the way we always did it. We could improve the efficiency by not going into MTC. We don't intend to return them to MTC once that facility opens back up again. Night service, we extended on five major routes. We will probably be working more on night service. We're not seeing what we would like to see as far as increases in ridership, and there may be some other options available for that. Frequencies on weekends were increased. And then, of course, we just recently launched the VRT system. The next changes we make, or we intend to make, are listed on this slide. The big ones, I think, are really on the Shaw corridor and Route 39, which is, kind of goes across Clinton and then up. We're going to cut the 9 short and bring the 39 up to where we've cut the 9 off. So essentially, we're not really changing any service. We're just changing the structure of our routes to provide that service. The big reason we're doing that is the 9 is very efficient up until we get to that 99 area. up until we get to that 99 area, and the freeway and all the construction going on over there tends to slow things down and cause it to be inefficient. The west side of 99 also is not a real efficient structure, so we're going to attempt to improve the service on the 9 by serving that area in a different way. The other big change is another frequency extension, the extended 15-minute frequency on 38. Right now, it cuts off at Jensen. We intend to increase that frequency all the way into the downtown area. That will not occur this fiscal year due to the timing of the CMAC grant for operating, and more importantly, the timing of, the lead time for electric buses, which would support that effort.
I had a follow-up on this slide when you said about the Route 9. Are you going to explain further in this presentation what you guys are doing? Or at what point? Because you just said you're going to make it better.
Oh, no, I thought I did. So Route 9 will be truncated at approximately Brawley? Brawley? And the 39 will come up and meet at that area. So that just allows us to have more, or less disruption on the overall route.
Okay.
So there are some efficiency changes that would likely come later. We have that corridor slated for the next traffic signal prioritization effort. We have funding for that. So those core routes that we have, Blackstone, Ventura, Cedar, and Shaw, we want to make those as efficient as possible. TSP seems to be doing pretty well on the Blackstone and Ventura corridor, so Shaw makes sense. And I may be digressing a little bit, but the Shaw corridor is more technologically ready to do that. A lot of the infrastructure is already in there, so we don't have to spend money to add that infrastructure. That give you?
Yeah.
Okay. Some other minor changes in there. I will say, every, everything on that list, other than the 38 because of the funding and lead times, should happen in FY '19, probably towards the end of FY '19, based on our processes we have to go through to schedule and run cut and do sign-ups. So we're going to time that with our typical signup process. The next slide just shows things that we didn't do. They may have saved us a little bit of money by doing them, but it wasn't a lot of money. These items here, the consultant, based on just sheer dollar savings and not good efficiencies on these, had recommended cutting them. But we looked at other factors, and so none of those are going away. I just wanted to point out that those do, they didn't provide any offset, so we'll continue to have those costs. And then the last slide just shows how much it's going to cost annually. So if I could do this slide over, I'd probably do it over. The additional changes are going to cost about $1 million per year, and we feel we can shoulder that. The cost to retain the services is another $300,000. The services that the consultant indicated were inefficient is about $300,000. The real net increase to the budget, because the 300 was already in there, is $1 million. So that will be a cost that we incur year in, year out. We look at our five-year projections and we feel we can sustain that. Further changes would require additional funding to be identified. That's all I have for the presentation. I'll open it up to questions. Any questions that the council members have?
I just have a couple of questions. I know that I had the opportunity to connect with a couple of the organizations here locally, like the Fresno Boys and Men of Color. I know some of them are in the audience, and because we have a workshop, we don't allow public comment. But I did want to just follow up on some questions, and I think we had this discussion in the subcommittee about Wi-Fi.
Yes, so...
So plans to implement?
We do have on, in next year's plans, to do Wi-Fi, not on the entire system. That is, we don't have the funding identified for that. But we do intend to put Wi-Fi at all of the BRT stations, as well as the buses that run on that route. And those stations would include Courthouse Park area as well as Manchester Center. So we're going to try it on those major routes and see how it works. If we want to extend that out into the rest of the system, we'll have to identify money. I will say that it would be probably less expensive to outfit the buses with Wi-Fi, simply because of the numbers of buses versus the number of bus stops we have. We have about 110 buses versus 1,400 bus stops. So the next likely step would be Wi-Fi on the buses. It probably would not make sense cost-wise to do it at every bus stop.
Okay. Is that what other cities typically do? It's on the bus?
Yes, yes. Major stops and on the buses.
What's the timeframe for...
We hope to get it done in this fiscal year.
This fiscal year?
Yeah.
Okay.
FY '19, so...
Another just follow-up question that they had was, in terms of adjustments and efficiencies for Routes 20, 26, and 32, what does it mean?
I, you know, I'm going to have to call a lifeline up here to give a good... I could probably give an explanation, but it wouldn't be a good one.
Good afternoon. Gregory Barfield, Assistant Director. Those routes are being looked at for efficiencies primarily on the loops that they take in order to come back into town, once they're on the north end and on the south end. We won't be doing anything, Councilmember Chavez, on 26 on the south end. But we will be on the north end as well as 22 and 20.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Those are all the questions that I had. Thank you again for the information.
And I did want to make one other comment. We will be going out for one more public meeting in between now and when we would come back to you guys for a vote. I think it's scheduled for July 28 at this point? 25th, July 25, and tentatively at Fresno City College.
Okay, perfect. Just keep us posted. That'd be awesome. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Great. So we are done with the remainder of the agenda. The only thing we have is closed session. City Attorney?
Yes, in closed session, we have real property negotiation concerning some FID property. Also, labor negotiations concerning CFPEA and fire management. There would not be any announcement afterwards.